The North Plains Planning Commission for November 13 to order at 6 o'clock. Please rise.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Could I please get the roll call?
Thank you. Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Levante.
Here.
Commissioner Health.
Here.
Commissioner Conodell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Van Damwijn.
Here.
And Commissioner Pares excused this evening and your ex officio counselor, Robert Kendall.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number four is public comments. This time is available for anyone in the audience or on Zoom for planning commission business that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone?
We don't see any hands up there.
All right, item number five. For October the 23rd, special meeting. Everyone read those and any changes, corrections? And then motions.
I'm going to approve the minutes from October 23rd as written.
Moved by Commissioner Levante, seconded by Commissioner Conodell for approval of the October 3rd special session minutes. Have all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And it's approved. Okay, item 6 is going to be a public hearing. This is a quasi judicial public hearing in which the planning commission will make a decision. There is, we have our city attorney here to answer or give statements as to how affordable housing affects our zoning codes. Our recorder is going to read the procedure on the public hearings and what items are available for discussions. Our planner, Mr. Miller, is going to give the criteria that the decision is based on. Those are the criteria that anyone can bring up and say they disagree with or agree with. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 6:03 for design review, 24-030 green light type 3s design review.
The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial de novo public hearing on city file TR 24-030 green light type 3 design review. The order of business will be as follows. The chair will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact or personal bias. The chair will request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed land use, first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. If the chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the planning commission. The decision will be entered into a final findings of fact will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties. Proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the recorder within 15 days following the date this decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their full name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to a condition of approval.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask the planning commission for any conflicts of interest, ex parte contact or bias. Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that challenges any of the commissioners here this hearing? Hearing none, none on Zoom?
Nope, we don't see any hands.
Okay, thank you. Could I please get the staff report, the agency comments, and any recommendations?
I just wanted to get the lights turned off so we can see it a little bit better.
Thank you, Chair King. Steve Miller, planning manager for the City of North Plains.
Okay, so we're here tonight as the chair has indicated for green light developments proposal of a 59 unit mixed use project. And next slide, please. The applicant is requesting development approval for a 59 unit mixed use affordable housing project. The subject property is a 2.02 acre parcel that is located in the Brin Hill neighborhood at the corner of Northwest North Avenue, Main Street, and Terrell Drive. It is actually bordered by three properties, and it also has Brooklyn Street stepped into it at the southeast corner of the property. Next slide, please. Okay, so staff prepared a staff report and supplied it to everybody who provided written comment, as well as the planning commission and the applicant, six to seven days prior to this meeting. And so that is the basis for staff's recommendation. We've prepared the staff report and included all the public comments that were provided into the staff report as well as any other applicable development criteria as well as state law. So it kind of lays out the roadmap, if you will, for what this type of project requires for approval. Next slide. And to that end, the laws that are applicable and codes are applicable to this application would be state laws ORS 197A 400, the Clear and Objective Approval Guarantee for an immediate housing project, and then ORS 197A 445, which specifically addresses affordable housing being allowed in commercial areas and density bonuses as well as increases in height. Then in terms of the North Plains Development Code, the sections that are applicable to this project would be the Design Review Chapter, the Neighborhood Community Zone, which is how the subject property is zoned, the Public Facilities Chapter, the street standards, as well as the off-street parking and loading criteria. So just, I believe everybody is familiar with where this property is located, but for those who may not be, the property is located off of North Avenue at Main Street and Terrell. It is a vacant parcel right now that basically has weeds and grasses and there's no trees, there's no significant vegetation. There are the houses that you see there on the east side that exist. There's additional houses that have since been built at the north end of Terrell there. I will note that the wording of the streets are a little off on this Google document here. And so the street at the north end of the property is actually Terrell. You kind of see it there at the left side, but it does continue through. It's not Main Street. That is an error on Google's part. Main Street is the north-south street, and North Avenue is the street that runs at the south end of the property, east to west. And as you can see, Northwest Brooklyn Street is also stepped into the property just about the south side of the center portion of the property there. As I indicated, this property is part of the Greater Brin Hill Master Plan. It was planted as phase one of Brin Hill Phase One. And it was set aside to be utilized for a mixed use project. So it was not to be primarily residential, but it was supposed to have both a mixed use and residential component to it for developing that property. Next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan, and I'll see if I can use my pointer to help point out a few things here for you. At the north end of the project right here, this is the standalone office building. Next to the office building is a proposed children's play area, and this area here has a barbecue. It has some seats, some benches, some garbage recycle, garbage containers. And so it's just kind of the main outdoor space really, if you will, for this project. The main access they're proposing is to the north here, up to Terrell Boulevard. They have their parking layout in the center here. Everything that does not have a building or a hard surface is proposed to be landscaped. And then the buildings for the apartment buildings, units, will be along the west side of the property and along the south side of the property. They have some bicycle parking in these areas here. There's also some, you can't really see very well up in this corner and here as well. This is the parking and loading area for the commercial building. They have their trash enclosure in the center of the parking lot. And that's really the main components of the proposed site plan. And as far as the streets, as you saw on the last slide, the streets that exist out there right now were recently constructed with the Brin Hill subdivision. These streets came in recently and have been designed to city standards. Next slide, please. Okay, so staff did mail out public notice. The property owner is within 250 feet of the subject property, and staff receives 12 written comments. Since I wrote the staff report, an additional letter has come in, and we have supplied that to the planning commission. So all letters that have been submitted are part of the record and have been provided to the planning commission. We also sent out requests for comments to Walton Valley Fire and Rescue as well as Clean Water Services. They essentially refer to the SPL letters that were provided as part of the application. And so Walton Valley Fire and Rescue indicated that they do need to provide a final review of the site and sign off their final inspection. And Walton and Clean Water Services essentially are requiring them to meet their overall standards for stormwater. And so they'll be required to work with Clean Water Services if they are approved to get any stormwater concerns addressed and any grading work that needs to go through Clean Water as well addressed as part of a condition of approval. Next slide. This slide is taking an opportunity to address some of the public comments I've received. Some of the public comments that were received applied directly to the applicable review criteria. And so instead of calling out everybody, I just made findings under those applicable criteria, and you could see either met that criteria or didn't, and that directly responded to the questions about parking, street standards, things of that nature. But in terms of these particular items here, I thought I would call them out a little bit and provide some additional clarity on those. So as far as the Brin Hill parks go that are in that project right now, all the parks are part of the Brin Hill Master Plan community. And when each phase of the project was recorded, it included a note on the plaque. And so what it would say is track, in this case, you know, it stays one, and I can't recall the the track for the park in case one off the top of my head, but it would say track H, for example, is a municipal park track, and it is subject to a public pedestrian bicycle access easement over its entirety. And what that is saying is that even though these parks are maintained by the HOA, they're actually available to everybody in the city to utilize. There's a public access easement over the entirety of the park to provide access to anybody in the city to utilize these parks. So they are available to the public. And as I indicated, each phase that included a park where there was phase one, two, the linear parks at phase three, the phase four park, and the phase five park, all share the same language in the notes on the plaque that those parks have a public and pedestrian access easement over their entirety. As far as parking goes, as proposed, the applicant's proposal met the required number of parking spaces to satisfy the off-street parking requirement. As far as requiring folks to provide additional parking beyond what is required, the city is very limited in our ability to be able to do that. The standard is the standard. And in this particular case, because it is an affordable housing project, the city can only apply the clear and objective standards to the project. That's why a certain criteria in the design review chapter was not included as part of the design review because it was not clear and objective. And in this case, when it comes to parking, we have very specific numbers that people need to hit for the type of uses that they are proposing. In this case, there's apartment units and an office building. Each type of apartment unit has a different threshold for parking. If it's a one unit place, it's one parking space. If it's a two-bedroom unit, it's 1.75 spaces, and if it's a three-bedroom unit, it's two spaces. The applicant proposed a parking layout that did meet that standard. So the city really doesn't have the ability or the authority to go out and require them to provide additional parking beyond that threshold. As far as tenant background checks, it's just really not even an applicable criteria that the city would even be able to review the application against. So it's just not anything that the city has the authority to regulate. So that kind of really is something we really can't even address. And then there were some questions about impacts to schools. As many people know, the city has been working on a urban growth boundary expansion. As part of that urban growth boundary expansion, we have been in close contact with the school district to ask them about their needs and where we are currently with capacity at our schools, and they have indicated that there's plenty of capacity at the schools, especially at the Apaladi School. It is well under capacity, and so they're hopeful that there will be some growth in the neighborhood here to bring additional students into the Apaladi School as it's currently under capacity significantly. So a brand new building that could use a few more students. Next slide, please. Okay, in my staff report, one of the things I brought up had to do with the access here to the north. And at the time of preparing the staff report, it was unclear to staff if this particular lot had legal access to this easement here. Since the writing of the staff report, I have had time to go over this with the city's legal counsel. I've also received comments from the applicant to address that particular issue. And as a result of my conversations with city legal counsel, as well as reviewing the applicant's letter that was provided by their legal counsel as well, we have concluded that they do have a legal right to utilize that easement. And it has to do with the language that was in the plaque notes right here. And so this particular track right here is Q. This one down here is H. And what it indicates is that, you know, those areas are private alleys and are subject to private access easements to benefit the adjacent lots. And since this is an adjacent lot to this particular easement, it does have a right to utilize that for access to that property. So as far as that issue goes, it has been resolved to staff satisfaction unless the planning commission has other questions. We're going to assist them with those questions. But staff is comfortable now with recognizing that as a lawful access for this particular property per the plaque notes. Next slide, please. The other issue that staff called out had to do with the parking standards. And so as you'll see, I wasn't able to get all the site plan onto this slide because it's so big, and I tried to get as much as I could for you to see the small writing on here. And so what you'll see is our standards are for this parking stalls, for 90 degree parking stalls to be eight feet five inches wide and not 18.5 feet long. The way the applicant proposed it was that the stalls would be 15 feet 6 inches deep, but nine feet wide. So they were wider than our standard, but they were shorter than our standard. And speaking with the applicant, they indicated that they were designing the parking lot around note number six in our development code. And as I read through that, it was my interpretation that that was a subjective criteria based on the terminology where appropriate. That seems subjective in my mind. I've kind of discussed this a little bit with legal counsel. I think there's some support that this is a subjective criteria. And because they're relying on the state statutes to have this reviewed as against clear and objective criteria, staff has indicated that they're not, this dash line represents the overhang that they're proposing for the stall with, the stall definite to comply with the city code based upon this note. And so staff is saying, you don't have the ability to pick and choose between clear and objective criteria and subjective criteria. It has to be all clear and objective criteria that the application is reviewed against. And since this is subjective, staff is finding that this layout design does not comply, particularly in the center area here that has concern. Because if a car were to park here, a car to park here, it could theoretically overhang to the point where they could, they could touch each other, particularly if it's a larger vehicle like a truck or something like that that can extend a little bit further into those areas and a small vehicle. And so that reason, staff has indicated that this layout does not meet our parking lot design standards per the clear and objective criteria. Since writing the staff report, staff has also been able to look at this area right here. And this area right here is similar to the area to the north. It's actually an additional portion of the easement for track Q to be expanded out into. And what the applicant has proposed is to put two parking spaces in that utility easement as well as the turnaround for those two lot, those two parking spaces, and the bicycle parking for these buildings to be in that easement. A little bit of conversation with legal counsel on this, and because we would want this to be curved, this area here, but that's our parking flat design standards, is these areas would be curved to help with drainage and whatnot. It effectively blocks that easement and paves it. And so it is staff's belief that those parking spaces would not be allowed or the bicycle parking would have to stop at the easement boundary. And the applicant can address that, but staff's concern is that that is blocking the easement, and it's an impediment. And therefore, it would need to be removed. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation to the planning commission, as the planning commission is considering this type 3 design review request for the establishment of a 59 unit mixed use affordable housing project. As I indicated, we have resolved the access issue to staff satisfaction. So the only outstanding issue that needs to be resolved is the parking lot design layout as well as the couple spaces that are in the eastern on the southeast corner of the property. And provided that those issues can be satisfactorily resolved to continue to meet our requirements, staff recommends approval of this project. Conversely, though, if these issues cannot be resolved satisfactorily to continue to meet our criteria, the staff would recommend denial of the project. And so at that point, I'm available for any questions that the planning commission may have.
Any questions of the planning commissioners?
Yeah, I was wondering, why do we have the entrance where it is? It seems like actually is dangerous.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The entrance to the complex, it seems like that is actually dangerous with people coming out of the alley, going around the corner, and people coming home of the complex.
Yeah, so as far as the access goes, this was the same access that was proposed with the previous project for this property that you reviewed. It was the same location there. The irony with this particular project is because it's clear and objective, there is a criterion in the design review chapter that does address access. It is 155-055-7, A7, excuse me. However, that criterion is subjective. It talks about things being harmonious. Harmonious is a subjective term, and because it is, it's not applicable to this particular project. The only thing the staff would have to base that access off of would be the access spacing standards. And it complies with the spacing standard for the access between main and this proposal, and the next street is even further over to the east there. And so I really was limited in what I had to review this against because it could only be reviewed against clear and objective criteria.
But there's a safety problem as well because there's not clear sight if, when somebody's coming out of the alley, if somebody's coming out of there, or when somebody's coming in and somebody's coming out of the alley. So there isn't. We do have rules about clear sight.
We do have clear vision requirements, and they didn't have anything located in the clear vision area of what is to be preserved. So the houses and the buildings were set back enough that it did not fall into the clear vision triangle. And so I'll allow the applicant to elaborate on that a little bit more as it's their burden to comply. But that is what staff reviewed and found that it did satisfy those two particular issues.
I love that same question on the, I kind of remember pretty in-depth conversations when the additional phases were going into the west that an access off of main right there, because to line them up, I don't know what happened to the.
I'm not sure. Your access is to line up?
To line up for this, for this mixed use site to line up with the intersection on the west.
Intersection to the, what intersection are you referring to? I have it up there as well. So you have Main Street and Terrell.
Was it? It's Terrell and.
Excuse me. You can testify when it's time to testify.
Was there a street south? It seems like we had lots of discussion about this to take the burden off of it. But anyways, I do have additional questions on, because I have never seen an easement interpreted like this. I've worked with title and deed records for 25 years now, and I've never seen somebody just outright blanketed while they're adjacent, even they're not benefit, they're not named as benefited, they're just assumed as Jason that they're going to get legal right to it.
I'll defer that to legal counsel.
And, you know, especially when you look at the CCNRs for the development itself, the CCNRs specifically exclude Lot 46 from any right to anything within that development. And looking at that, since track Q is HOA owned, which Lot 46 is specifically removed from any restrictions of HOA, they're just going to outright be granted access to burn their private street.
So if I may, first of all, HOA rules have no bearing on the city's decision.
Right, but everybody's basing it on the plaque, so I'm just the plaque and the CCNRs record together.
The plaque dedicates track Q, which is that alley there that accesses into Main Street, sorry, Terrell. Says it's for the benefit of the adjacent lots and parcels, right? So Lot 46 is an adjacent lot. So if that, it has a legal entitlement to track Q from the plaque. So that's only 10 feet, right? And then adjacent to it, on the left, it says 10-foot private access easement to benefit lots 106 to 115. So that is an additional 10 feet that's located on the applicant's property, on Lot 46, that combined with the 10 feet from track Q provides 20 feet of right-of-way. So that's why, I mean, the 10 feet that's on their property is on their property, so they can use it for access. And then the 10 feet that's part of track Q is dedicated on the plaque to the adjacent lots and parcels, and that includes Lot 46 because it's adjacent.
So in this particular case, then, this particular applicant could use. So in this particular case, then this particular applicant could use um either track H or track Q or um ingress egress out of the development.
Um, track H.
Track H is.
Is, I know it's in the south. I'm I'm um. So that's, no, it's because that one specifically says that ten feet of it is um to benefits lot nineteen, oh yeah, through sixty-three. So yeah, yes, correct. So it's also um, the track to the south is also dedicated to benefit lots nineteen through sixty-three, which obviously includes forty-six.
Does the city have any um, as as far as um am I thinking, uh, access uh spacing for um multi, multi driveway use, I guess? What is our, what is our minimum width for for that between homeless intersections?
Yeah, so I I'll I'll have to defer to Stephen. The applicant probably has has some thoughts on this as well. I think it is more as an alley than a driveway, but I'm not sure that's a distinction that.
But I don't know if you can call it an alley, you're gonna have, you know.
Yeah, these are definitions in the code.
Coming out of it.
Right. But we we don't get to, I assume there's definitions in the code, so I want to just assume.
Well, I'm just thinking of it as traffic counts. So traffic counts um don't alley, alleyways themselves don't traditionally have a high traffic count. So if we're just purely looking at traffic counts and not actually road designations, at what point does the city say the spacing between this particular area that's going to have a traffic count of this many vehicles, a hundred and fifty-five feet east is going to have a traffic count of this many vehicles.
Right, well, the point of, the point which the city can say that is when your code says so.
That's why I was asking what our spacing is.
Yes, I, as far as your, the detail that you're getting into, the code doesn't have that specificity in it. Getting into trip volumes and uh that nature. Um, as far as um the access width uh of their driveway, um typically um for commercial use, we would allow um up to thirty-six feet.
Allow up to thirty-six.
We would allow a thirty-six foot wide driveway for a commercial business and and apartment complexes considered commercial.
Is there any?
No conversation that would.
Yes, I'm saying that we don't have a minimal, we have a maximum standard and the maximum is thirty-six feet.
Well, this was, this was, you presented this as that's the main entrance. And you went through this.
I'm sorry.
So I assume that that's the main entrance into the building and it's not really considered an hour, or is it?
It becomes an access drive essentially for this property.
But the attorney said it's an alley, but it won't be.
Yeah, the we need to look at the codes. It's this definition of alley. We're just throwing these terms around as if everybody agrees what they mean. And I'm not sure that's true. So we need to look at the codes. The definition of an alley is what driveway is. I don't know just.
And I'm just wondering, what's the purpose? And I guess this is my question. Why there? Why not off a Main Street since it's a separate building itself, something?
Get us some definitions here real quick so we can go over that.
Do we have any other questions? Staff report?
I how many of them? It's fifty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, and when we talked about parks in Bryan Hill, we request and so many square feet per door for the parks. Are they meeting the requirements? Do we have the footage in the parks to allow fifty-nine doors left?
I'm sorry, we're trying to get out, so I can answer that question. But as far as, as far as uh the the park space goes, um, they are providing an additional park space in their project. Um, and as far as um the overall Brin Hill master plan goes, um, it's my understanding, of course, I was not here, but it's my understanding and speaking with those who were, and have some background on this, that um the the master plan addressed the parks for the entire project. Um, and and so it was satisfactory.
Per door.
It was.
It's square footage per door. What I want to make sure is that there is enough park square footage that they are allowed to have fifty-nine doors.
Based on what I have been informed of, they do. Um, if you would like to take some additional time to dig into that further, um, we absolutely can do that.
Well, I had brought up that the code said about the municipal parks is that uh there was two or five thousand per acre plus uh two hundred per dwelling unit. And uh this was all based on a maximum uh dwelling unit of forty-eight. So the fifty-nine is an additional eleven dwelling units and that would be another forty-four hundred square feet of municipal park that I don't know if that subdivision has available.
We could certainly take a deeper dive in that one question.
That's why I brought that up earlier.
As I think everybody uh on this board knows, um, there are many things that happened before I got here. And so I do appreciate your wisdom and insight to help bring that to uh the forefront. And um if there's something that needs to be looked into uh uh more, we we will do that. But again, I I did reach out to the previous planner that was here and then picked her brain a little bit on some of these issues. Uh, that planner was also the person that reviewed the previous project that went through before the planning commission that was very similar to this layout. And that's what I was told. Um, and so if uh there is some question on that, we can uh, you know, dive into those documents and and try and uh see what we can find.
Any other questions of the staff report? I mean, I, this is not so much a question, but a concern is that uh Brookings Street butts right into this property and they're not using it as an access point, which I mean is the widest access point. And the other concern I have, of course, is that you have all this parking interior and one small exit point. It's not just the primary, it's the only.
Yes.
Obviously, I would be concerned about that for public safety. So nothing else, at least like to see some kind of fire gated uh Brookings Street or something. It's a secondary access or even uh primary access on Main Street.
We. Yeah, I I appreciate that trick thing. I I was interested in hearing from TDFNR on that fire life safety perspective for the single access. And they signed off on the site plan. They they said it was um, it met their needs. Um, essentially what the fire department was saying is they would probably fight any fires in those structures from the primary streets that surround the project. It probably would not go interior to that. And that the spacing between the units provide them sufficient, sufficient width to be able to work between the units to be able to get into that area. So they were showing um, you know, the lines on the plat map that TDFNR reviewed showed their access routes coming from the main streets and going between the buildings to get access to the rear. Um, and so we kind of defer to TDFNR for their uh concerns on fire life safety. Um, as far as any secondary accesses go for uh potential um fires or or that type of issue, um, it could potentially require some type of um gate on Brookings. If that was something that you believe would um address that concern where um the gate would remain closed um unless there was an emergency and then it would open to provide additional access points to to lead the the property. Um, but again, um, I think that's a really great question for the applicant.
Well, as I mentioned, my concern is, you know, if there's an incident at this one narrow entry access point, then the whole complex is blocked as far as anybody getting out. So I.
I'm sure you're you're concerned for for that. Um, and uh we discussed that a little bit um prior to the meeting. And uh one of my suggestions was that a potential gate there at Brookings Street. In terms of why they didn't propose that as their main access, um, I'll I'll have to defer to the applicant to answer that question.
Any other questions of the staff report? Okay.
Um, if I can make one, so in terms of alley, we did, we pulled up the definition. And and what it says is an alley is a narrow vehicular service access to the back or side of properties. In in this particular case, it's coming on the side of the property.
But it's not just a property, it's fifty-nine properties.
Fifty-nine dwellings on a single property, that's correct.
Uh, before we move on to uh the applicant, since our city attorney is here, can you uh, Mr. Green, give us a kind of a rundown of how uh the Affordable Housing Act uh modifies our ability to enforce the codes as they exist?
Right, so as I'm sure a lot of people are aware, in the last six or seven years, the legislature has been very focused on providing housing, making more housing available. Um, in my opinion, they're not entirely clear on how to do that. So they have passed a whole bunch of laws hoping that some of them work. And in most cases, it includes the phrase, a city shall or a local government shall, county shall shall approve an application for, sometimes it's emergency housing, sometimes in this case it's affordable housing, provided it meets the following standards, and then lays out a half or dozen or so um criteria that we have to determine are met. Um, but it, because it says shall, it doesn't give the city the discretion or ability to deny an application if it meets those standards. Right? So it is no question, just um state control over local discretion. And there've been a lot of these laws lately, uh, and it's frustrating. But um, you know, we are a nation of laws and the legislature has passed this law. And in this case, um, it's found in the Oregon revised statutes at number one nine seven eight point four four five, and it's described in the staff report. And it starts with the definition of what is affordable housing and it describes what uh the project has to meet to to uh accomplish that definition. And then it says a local government like North Plains shall allow affordable housing if the proposed affordable housing is a property that is owned by A, B, or C, is owned A, B, or C. Um, it says we have to allow the conversion of a building, a portion of a building from commercial use to residential use. Um, and establishes a number of other standards. So, you know, long story short, the legislature has passed a very specific statute that requires this city and every city to approve approve a project that meets the definition of affordable housing. Uh, we have determined it's described why in the staff report that this project meets this, those standards, which is why we don't have the discretion um to simply deny the project for reasons that are not provided in the statute. The other thing is there's a different statute um that says a city may only apply clear and objective standards, not discretionary standards, but clear and objective standards to an application for housing. This is an application for housing. So we can't apply standards that say things like the access has to be harmonious with other uh access points in the neighborhood or in the area because what is harmonious is a matter, it's very subjective, right? It's a matter of opinion. Um, a standard that says something has to be consistent with, or the services have to be adequate to meet the needs of, well, what is consistent with, what is adequately? Those are subjective standards. We can't apply those by state law. Um, and I should point out from a purely practical perspective, if we deny an application based on just for housing, based on discretionary standards, um, and that decision is appealed to the state land use board of appeals, and we get reversed, we also get the luxury of paying the appellate attorney's fees, which runs into many thousands of dollars. So the legislature has added sort of a step, if you will, to the admonition that we shall approve. So between the clear and objective standards statute, and that, by the way, is in ORS one in nine seven A point four hundred, between that and the affordable housing statute in one nine seven eight point four four five, the city's discretion is really very, very limited. Is that what you were asking? Yes, thank you.
May I follow?
Yeah.
Given the affordable housing standard is lower, are there any clear and objective local city ordinances that this project does not meet other than, that's already been addressed, other than parking, are there any clear and objective ones that it does not meet? Yet still applies to the affordable housing?
But we have that, um, that's really a question for Stephen. He did, I think, a fairly thorough staff report. It goes through all the criteria that we believe are clear and objective and determines why they are met with the exception of that one parking issue.
So the only ones, Stephen. Okay, thank you.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to come forward?
Please state the name and address for the record. Good evening. My name is Tim Lawler. I'm with Green Light Development. Uh, my address is thirty-four sixty-two North East Sandy Boulevard.
Would you like to do any presentation on your project?
I would. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, planning commission, uh, staff. Uh, I appreciate everyone being here tonight. Um, my name is Tim Lawler. I'm the development manager for this development. Um, I've been working on this development for over a year. As you all aware, this property has been available on the market for probably over two years. I'm here tonight to introduce this development to you all, answer as many questions as possible and to ease any concerns um as much as I can. So we look forward to this dialogue. Our legal, we do have our legal uh team here that can answer more specific legal questions as that's obviously going to be question. We also have our design team here from CTK Architecture, which can comment as well. A little introduction into Green Light Development. We've been in business for fifteen years and we develop housing. Our primary goal is developing housing. We know there's a housing crisis in the state of Oregon, in all communities in Oregon, big or small. Uh, we've developed multifamily housing, single family homes, town homes, um subdivisions, all sorts of housing. In the last five years, we've been focused on affordable housing because the gap on the expensive of the housing has just increased dramatically and people are losing their homes at high rates. And we believe that housing is just a keystone to safety, stability and opportunity growth, no matter what community. About us, we've been partnering with Home versus Development for the last five years. In those five years, this is our, this will have about nineteen developments for affordable housing in five years, over a thousand units. Uh, we go to the next slide. You'll see that all over the state, we've built, we like, we prioritize and like to work in smaller communities near major cities. You can see we've been in Malala, State, Mill City, Estacada, Tillamook. More than that, we like, well, we like building in these communities because it's important that they need housing just as much as anyone else. Similar to North Plains, we need housing. And they often get overlooked on funds and they also don't get often overlooked on just the intention to get the housing. So you can see a few highlights of developments that we're, we're proud of all our moments, but a few that we're especially proud of is our Bridge Meadow Rentin Project. This is an intergenerational housing that we deal with for seniors uh and families who have adopted foster care children. It's an amazing concept that builds community. Family Commons in Portland was for veterans. The Lawrence in Portland uh was for Zoni Catholics who were fleeing religious persecution in the month. So our partnerships are key. In State and Mill City and Estacada, we built over almost two hundred units for families that were affected by the wildfires of twenty twenty. We have intention and we have good meanings in developing good communities and good homes that are safe and affordable. One of the main reasons I like to add that in building these communities is because using county AMIs, area median income and rent, it's really workforce housing for these communities. There's a lot of preconceived notion about affordable housing and we need to set that aside and think about the sounds that are being built and who they're going to serve. So, um, can you go to the next slide? Other way. No problem.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I need to break.
I would wish, so. Of course, we don't show you off.
That's all good. So you can see here, or you can just see like this, here. So this is an example of a lot of developments that we've built, built recently. Right there in the center of the screen is Essequita, beautiful playground, three-story tall, earth advantage gold certified. We have Family Commons on top right there, Bridge Meadow project I mentioned. We also have an interesting example of our community, trying to build spaces for people and families to build community. They almost always have playgrounds, and they're always earth advantage gold certified, which is not just the materials we're using are healthier, but also our appliances, our energy, which reduce costs for tenants. Uh, let me go to the next slide. You know, what we got, we had our neighborhood meeting, um, you know, a few months ago. There was a lot of, a lot of concern, a lot of opposition, I'll be honest. Um, and the big question was, why are we building here? And the reality is, we're building in North Plains because it's a great community. This is Bryn Hill's fabulous new master plan. North Plains has an amazing history, um, and it's a really great opportunity to build much-needed apartments. There's not much, fan, multifamily apartments here in the city of North Plain. We look at the site when I'm looking for new opportunities to develop these homes and communities, we look at parks, we look at schools, we look at the city center, where can we do this? And where does it make sense? This site checks out all of those on the checklist. The school, we talked about, they have capacity. There's parks, we're adding another little park, um. And we know in the housing needs analysis from twenty twenty-two of North Plains, that fifty-seven percent of rent-earning households are cost burdened. A hundred and twelve units per that housing needs analysis are needed in this rent range in North Plains, based on the housing needs analysis of North Plains. So here's kind of some examples, so the amenities of what we're building as well. You saw the player area in the pictures, previous pictures, these all units all have, in unit washer dryers, they have air conditioning, cap quartz countertops, two-sneak closets, stainless steel clients. We're gonna be about two parking spaces per unit, which I believe is above the requirements. They'll have EP charging stations, and as I mentioned, they're earth advantage gold certified. The question is like, how much are these rents, right? What is affordable? We'll ask sixty percent AMI, right? We all just have these preconceived notions. So, three bedrooms at eleven hundred and fifty square feet is eighteen hundred and forty-one dollars. A two-bedroom at nine hundred square feet is fifteen hundred, is sixteen hundred dollars more, and one bedroom is around thirteen twenty-seven. There are no project-based vouchers on this, on this development, there's not such a name. There are gonna be sixty percent AMI rents, thirty percent AMI rents. A partner on one of this is Central Culture. They're a Latin-based organization with a long history in Washington County. Their, their headquarters is in Hillsboro. They have a long tie, they have history ties to this community of North Plains. They were excited about this opportunity to expand and use that commercial, that small building to offer their services here. There's a long history. Oregon Housing Community Services hasn't written a letter of intent to fund this development, so there's money waiting to build these homes needed. Yeah, actually, could we go back a little more? So just kind of on, um, the fifty-nine we did. You know, one thing to note is, you know, as Chris P mentioned, there's a lot of legislation coming down from the state, right? The goal is to build housing. It's very challenging for everyone at certain times. This, with these new schedules, this site is actually zoned with the bonuses, I believe up to seventy-two units. So fifty-nine, you know, we knew that parking is an issue here. In North Plains, people commute to work, people commute to Intel, Nike, they commute to Hillsboro, Horse Grove Banks, wherever. Um, we need cars to go to work. Um, and so that's why, you know, one of the reasons that it's not getting maxed out. And the timeline right now, as everyone wants to know, our goal will be to break out in summer, twenty twenty-five, and be valued at your construction. So, can we go to the next, next slide? Wait till you get up again next time. Um, and so, yeah, yeah, the question is, who's gonna live here, right? Those rents all of a sudden don't seem so affordable. So here's the income limits that you see on your screen. So one person earning about fifty thousand dollars would qualify to live here. That's seen, a senior on fixed income, SSI, that's someone working the new library community engagement job in North Plains Library.
Quiet, excuse me.
You know, a family of five, you can't say there is around seventy-five thousand dollars. So these are jobs that I pulled recently on the right, uh, from recent postings in this nearby community. You know, tech is a big deal here, and in the neighboring towns, we know people commute from North Plains to go working. In tech, those are Ibarra technologies, could be a field service tech, or mancracking tech. Amazon has a huge service center nearby. You can go work at Amazon and qualify to live in this house. What's amazing is that these jobs, we talked to the Hillsboro, um, School District, they said many of their positions would qualify to live here. Talked to one of the biggest employers in town, he said the majority of his staff would qualify to live here. What's awesome about that is that those dollars that they earn get to come back into the community and support local businesses. That is huge, to not have dollars leave in the community, or coming back from other communities. What really stood out to me is when we first posted this public notice, I got a lot of phone calls personally, from concerned citizens. Rightfully so, I actually enjoy talking about this. You know, it's really hard to convince someone to believe in what you're doing, if they're already opposed to it, right? We see that nationally. But talking to these folks was really great. I don't think I changed their mind by any means, but an older couple who lives across the street from this development, mentioned that their son grew up here in North Plains, and now lives in the new Bryn Hill apartment. He has roommates, it's a married couple, and he can't afford to live on his own. When I mentioned these rents and these income levels, they're like, oh, he could afford to live there, in a one-bedroom unit, he could have his own place, he's an adult. That'd be great, still be close by, still be his son. That is one of the reasons we did. There was another woman I spoke to, who her daughter couldn't afford to live there, she was, I cannot believe it was Bethany, it wasn't Bethany, but that came up in another letter. But her grand, her grandchild and daughter can't be nearby, and she looked, oh, they could afford to live here. These are great homes that could bring people back home. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the site plan, there's obviously a lot of concern and discussion here, and it needs to be had, and we're, we're happy to have it. A lot of us was already raised, all right. The buildings are, are positioned on north and main for reasons. We know this is a new home, we need, a lot of people are buying new homes in Bryn Hill. And for, also want to clarify, actually, I spoke to a woman after our neighborhood meeting, and it's not just Bryn Hill, this is where this is all of North Plain. So I apologize if that Bryn Hill turned to fur up, but we know this affects all of North Plains. Um, but the buildings are on north and main for a reason, because they give space from the new single-family homes. Instead of having a building right next to these new townhomes or single-family homes, there's space. It also hides the parking lot from the streets, so if you're walking along the streets, you're not gonna look at a giant parking lot full of cars. It was very intentional design. We put, um, the playground and the, the office of north, because that is, again, closest to the homes, so the smallest impact, closest to the homes. The reason the entrance off Terrell is because we're not allowed to enter off north, one. The community was outspoken about using Brookings, two. They do not want apartments going through that neighborhood, it's quite a long distance from, I think it's three hundred and thirteen, down Brookings into the, into the alley, or into the parking lot. Three, mainly, that this planning commission already approved entrance off Terrell previously, and so we designed it with clear sight on both sides. And, um, main was really the only other feasible option, but really what that does is it pushes buildings closer to the homes. So we thought it was more important than having larger buildings to the home, to use a pre-approved entrance, that planning commission approved, to go forth right there, and use it. Fires approved it, and as Steve mentioned, you know, they will access safety from the outside of the, of the, um, property. Additionally, screening and buffering came up was a large concern of the neighborhood, hundred percent, totally understand. With, there's proposed in the landscape plans, a six-foot fence along the eastern perimeter, a lot of landscaping that's not shown here with tall trees, cypresses, that will give buffering, screening for most homes. And then I mentioned also too, yeah, I talked about Brookings, the legal access, we, we are complete agree, agreement with Chris Green, and my lawyer, Allison can speak to that more than if needed, um, but that private access, he's been, my understanding is that's an easement. If any of us gave an easement to our neighbors, we, we don't give up our land, we just let them use the property. So again, I won't, I'll let the legal talk about that. But again, this is, this is, you know, these are high-end designs, we're focused on community, we're focused on safety, and we're really trying to create with this, this development, North Plain has single-family homes, it has townhomes, and now we'll have apartments, which is really part of the stepping stone to housing. Um, we talked about school capacity, we talked about buffering, traffic came up, totally understandable, understandable. One thing to note is that we submitted, and it's in the public package, Lancaster Mowley is a, is a renowned, um, traffic engineer firm in Oregon, probably the best of what they do. They did the traffic engineering for the master plan community, and they did it for this community, for our, our apartment community. And they actually showed that our site is gonna be less of an impact than the mixed-use community will be, by about two hundred and eighteen trips a day, significantly less. And that is because commercial use has a lot of people coming and going all day, all night, all along their open. This is mainly people leaving in the morning, take their kid to school and go to work, come home in the evening, from work to metro. Parking, uh, was mentioned again, you know, I wanna stress that under, this is always, always a concern of every single development. Um, we're averaging, per the city code, over two spots per unit, which is over exceeding code. There's ninety-four spaces onsite, and that doesn't, the, the two does include spaces offsite, which is, again, per code, whether this was affordable housing or not. Per the parks comment, um, that was brought up, I believe, by, um, Commissioner Hop. So, we actually just, I apologize, this is a little rusty, because we explored this about a year ago when we first started looking at the site. So the Bryn Hill Master Plan was approved, um, built about five point one six acres of parks to their original design. They reduced their design, I can't remember how many units off top of my head, I was, that's what I was trying to find out in my email. But, um, so currently, they have five point one six, but current demand of the master plan is four point eight nine. So it's overbuilt, we took that into account into our calculation. So that, that has been, I believe, sent like, a year ago to the city, we can find that and pull that up again. Um, but that is a really good concern, that was a major concern of ours. Ron, can we go to the next slide? Um, yeah, so design, again, just really wanna stress the quality of these homes. The quartz countertops, the LVT flooring, these are beautiful, beautiful places to call home. I can't tell you how many times that we do these openings, and people walk in and go, wow, this is amazing. And much trying to powder, so it's our back, it's really our intention is to build homes. We go to the next one. So this is in response to the parking question that came up, um, the three-foot overhang. So we were actually in disagreement with the, the code being clear and objective. We believe that that three-foot overhang was clear and objective, and the original site increased landscaping and increased buffer with our neighbors. On the right side, you can see, it's pretty minimal, it's hard to tell, it's so small. We can design this without that three-foot overhang, no problem. If that's the way, um, the city wants, or like this planning commission prefers, that's gonna reduce landscaping, it's gonna push cars closer to the homes. So, it sounds like there was a, unless, you know, we'll let the legal team kind of opine on what was clear, clear and objective or not. But other than that, I would leave it to you all to decide whether this planning commission would prefer more buffer, more landscaping, or less, and, and we'll do it. Either way, we're taking the required distances per code. Um, and there was one, the comment about, um, in the bottom easement about track H, I think is, maybe I'm excited, but on that easement about stormwater. Um, again, we can, we can, um, redesign that, we'll lose about two to three parking spaces. But we believe in a lot of our parking, um, you're allowed to build parking on storms, sewer easements, is my understanding per development code. Uh, again, you can ask the legal team or designer, but, you know, either way, there's a solution to that, it's lots of two onsite spaces, two to three onsite spaces. So, so yeah, that, that's, that's really, you know, we design these, these homes with intention, there's meaning. I know a lot of times a package shows up on the doorstep and it's kind of like, it puts us on the, our heels a little bit, right? We're not sure who, who these folks are, what they're doing, why they're doing this. And this site, again, was designed for forty-eight apartments, part of the master plan that was approved by this planning commission. Um, it was designed for, to have a commercial aspect of it. So we're, we're meeting the intention of the design. Um, and we are truly trying to build community that offers people safe, quality, affordable homes. So that's, yeah, what I have. Any others?
I'm ready, I'm sorry. Do you want me to state my name? Allison Reynolds, and seven six zero Southwest Ninth Avenue in Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero five. Um, and I'm land use council for the applicant. Um, I guess, if, um, Steve, you could give us maybe a little bit more information about the concern on that second parking issue with the private access easement. I know on the map, there are lots of different things in that area, and so I think of, that was the first time I had actually heard about that one being a concern. And so if you can just clarify, so I think we can give this body better information as to what we can do, like conditioning to get rid of those parking spaces or, or whatnot.
Yeah, I appreciate that, um, it was a last-minute discovery, essentially. Um, and so in terms of the, um, parking that is increasing into the easement, um, the easement is there for a variety of, of lots, um, and, and other utilities. Um, and so if somebody were to move in parking stalls, uh, where cars could park, uh, with curbs and so forth, um, it would effectively block, um, anybody's future use of that easement. Um, particularly if there was a car there, um, where somebody needed to get down into that area. Um, and so that was, that's general concern, is that, uh, you know, the parking of vehicles and the location of the bike racks in the easement um, would preclude, uh, potential use of that. Uh, and then, um, because there are, there are utilities under there, um, you know, with it being paid, I understand that, that you could do that. It would be, uh, the applicant's burden if there was a line break or something that would have to be replaced, they would essentially have to deal with that. Um, but I think from staff's perspective, it would make better sense to not block the easement. Um, and so that's really what, uh, staff, that was the perspective that staff was coming from.
And, and I'll, if, if I, um, elaborated that, so looking at, we're talking about, um, track H.
Yeah.
And there's a fifteen-foot waterline easement to the benefit of City of North Plains, and a twenty-five-foot storm and sanitary easement for Clean Water Services. And I, I haven't seen the terms of those easement, but standard easement terms are you can't do anything inconsistent with the purpose of the easement, and paving over, uh, a sewer or water easement, particularly if you're gonna put parking on it, and bike park and everything else could reasonably be seen as inconsistent with the purpose of that easement. As Steve mentioned, the, the nightmare scenario is there's a waterline break, and we've got a car parked right over the top of it. So tha, that's the concern.
Okay, got it. So it's not because of the ten-foot private access easement that I, we did.
No, it's the sewer waterline easement, making sure we don't do something inconsistent with those easements.
Totally makes sense, yeah, and I, I've seen them lots of different ways, sometimes they don't mind if you pave over them, as long as you're okay with paying, if you're paving back, if something happens like that, um, but I think that's, that, thank you for clarifying, that makes more sense to show what the concern is. And Tim, were you saying that we could just remove the two parking spaces that are in that area?
Correct, yeah, I understand from the design team is that we can move those and move more landscaping. It just kind of goes back to the, the more parking onsite or offsite type question, right? So, yeah, we can do it, if that's what it takes, happy to do it.
And, and I think if we were to go with that solution, um, if that is something that city feels is not approvable in its current drawn, um, condition, I think we would accept a condition of approval that just says condition on you removing those two spaces that are on, in that area.
Yeah, I think what we could do, um, you know, the planning commission is all in agreement, um, is have a clear and objective condition of approval that in the case of the applicant, shall submit a revised site plan, um, showing those spaces removed from the easement. Uh, and still complying with all the other standards and whatnot.
Okay, thanks, thank you for. Okay, thanks, thank you for.
That's all I have, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Labonte.
I just have one, out of all of the projects that you've shown us tonight, do all of those projects have access to shopping and pharmacies and transportation center of affordable housing?
Access to that.
Access to that, local access.
Yeah.
You realize you have none of that here.
I mean. There is mark, I, I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, that's usually affordable housing goes in areas where they have access to those other amenities. And here in our town currently, you don't have that access, so I'm just, I was just trying to get a feel for your other projects. How many of those had that access within a, you know, say a two to five mile, that five mile radius?
Yeah, that's a good question, I know Mill City, you know, is a town smaller than here, S K is pretty similar, so this is something that we're designing in and working and building in, and it's being received well. Obviously, you know, it's not a full grocery store, but there are little local marks that can provide needs. So yeah, it's a tough one, but we do believe that, we know that like North Plains is working to try to get a grocery store here in town, right? There was an RFP about two years ago, there was an agreement, I don't know where that is, signed with. Can't remember the name of the purveyor, but.
Yeah, it's not really moving, it's pretty overgrown site right now.
It's tough, yeah, but, but because the demand isn't here, so the population increased with Master Brin Hill, the population, right? It's a chicken and egg situation.
But my, my point is, is it's just hard to, whether or not we agree or disagree with the project coming to town, it's just hard to set up something for failure. And if there's not going to be amenities to, to provide these people, we're going to be forcing everybody to drive, and which is going to force additional vehicles. Which that area already is tight for parking, especially on street parking, so it's, it's just a general.
You mentioned that you did consider and maybe look at options for access off of Main. I assume it would be where the dark green is. So if you put access, when you did that assessment, what area got pushed to?
A whole building would have to be pushed, would be taken out more or less, and pushed over to the side. There was other concern from the city as well about cutting into the new streets. And then also, you know, again, that the access off Tyrell was previously approved.
What was the concern about cutting off of other, cutting into other, the Main Street?
Just damaging new streets was my recommendation.
I didn't hear all that.
What, what, he said there was concern by the city of access off of Main because of cutting into the street?
No, our concern is not going to Main, our concern is going to north, because it's a collector's street.
Oh, okay, so no concern going to be.
As far as Brin Hill, I mean, you started Brookings, Tyrell, and Main Streets go. Those would be available, because they're a lower classification street than north, and so our code says, you know, when there's an opportunity to go to a lower classification street, that's what's desired. That's why we don't want them to go down to North Avenue.
Yeah, okay, but no concern to the.
No.
And so then, yeah, moving the building closer to the currently.
Which, which building would move closer to?
Be one of those ones in the center on Main, I mean, it would have to be determined. And then, and then you.
So I suppose one building would move a little closer?
It would have to get shifted over, yeah, and then we'd be losing a lot of onsite parking.
And to help you a little bit there, Commissioner Miller, the previous project that came in had an access around this area.
Yeah.
And up here, that was how the previous one was designed, down here approximately, and up here.
Oh, you had two access points.
Main Street stuck in my head.
Okay, so.
The previous one had two points of access.
Okay, I can see how two points of access would move parking, I think if you just change it to one, probably would be less if I had one part. Okay, so the trade-off is a couple parking spots and shifting one building slightly closer.
It would be significantly closer, because if you look at that layout, I, I could let the architects discuss that, actually, I'm not, they can probably discuss it.
You want me to handle that?
Yeah, anything that can give us on the impact of that, because I think there's some.
Scottsola sixteen forty-five Front West Point Street, Portland, Oregon. Yeah, so access off of Main, so it involved a significant shift of just the site plan in general, the width of the office building. Just the dimensions in general are significantly different than the apartment buildings. So then that would also shrink the parking lot from the north down, reducing stalls that way, and then our access to Main there. Estimated, estimated by four stalls out of the lot onsite, and then also the removal of further street parking off of there. So with that, point on Tyrell, that was maintaining the vast majority of parking, which was a concern, and as Tim noted, it was previously approved. Similarly with the bottom corner over the easement, that would also be a higher approval.
So it sounds like removing some street parking and some impact, they don't have configured on the interim. Up to four spaces.
It could be even more, because with, because all of the buildings would all move as well.
Okay.
The street parking actually wouldn't really affect much other than that building. Because there's not really, we have houses across the street on the North Avenue end of that, so.
Oh, yeah.
The building itself, not the community. Yeah, the street parking, I'd say, yeah, the removal of the street parking on Main itself, yeah.
Any other questions?
How many stores?
Commissioner Van Dom.
How many stores?
Two, three.
Three stores.
Any other questions at the applicant? I know you had your traffic study done, I guess one of the concerns I had is that you talk about the amount of commercial traffic being reduced, because it's a smaller footprint. But you had, I noticed on there, and I don't have it written for me right now, but forty-eight, you're saying that this is going to create less transportation, or less trips per day. But I don't, in there, it identified how many forty-eight units was going to create, and then identified how many fifty-nine affordable housing units, and fifty-nine was less than forty-eight?
Fifty-nine is less than forty-eight plus the ma-.
No, no, it, no, no, it said just the units, it didn't add the commercial, commercial was separate from that.
Of course, our traffic here was supposed to be here, it's not.
I just don't understand how affordable housing has less trips per day than regular.
I believe though also, I think you said affordable housing, I believe has different calculations.
Why it would be different calculations, since there's still vehicles?
Not traffic in here, I don't know.
Any other questions at the applicant?
I, I did do my research on the parking stuff, and so it appears that in. When it comes to housing, that there is a little bit, slightly less trips. However, most of those are in big cities where they have buses and light rail and all those things, so commute would be less. But I'm not sure how many trips they came up with, but also the national average trip per door is nine point five trips per day. And so, as I'm trying to go through this traffic impact, it didn't seem to measure up to that. And using the old traffic study from six years ago, based off what's went on in the town total. There's been other subdivisions besides Brin Hill that also use North Avenue, and the people that are actually going to the school, and so. I think we should have a new study.
And any other questions at the applicant? Okay, if you have nothing else, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain any proponents that wish to testify, those in favor of. There anyone on the list?
Little of factor. No, we're not seeing any hands.
Okay, thank you, then we'll move on to opponents, people wishing to testify against. Anyone like to come forward, I got some cards here, people, put their names down. Now's the time to come forward. Your name is?
Mike Church, three two zero four zero North.
Yeah, I've got your card here, okay, thank you, sure.
Some of my questions have been answered. But it's created also new ones. Real quick, if I may be so bold, just for illustration purposes. Everybody in this room that has more than two vehicles, can you raise your hand? Is that too much? I would assume that most people in here, especially if you're married, you have a car, your wife has a car. I assume that's going to be, and I've lived in apartments in my younger years. We each had a vehicle because we had two different jobs. I think that is going to be an issue with this, there's not enough parking. So minimum with fifty-nine units, I would say there would need to be at least a hundred and twenty parking spaces, just for those units not to count. Not to forget about the, the commercial use. So I think that if, I know they fall inside the city guidelines, I think we need to really address those. And take those into account, like for example, the, the dispense, there was not enough parking there. But it still fell in within the guidelines, but if everybody knew there was not going to be enough parking, so there. I do have a question, if we go back to that site map, if we could. Well, the bottom, this is question for, is the bottom left-hand corner in the dark green area? That I think Mr. Miller was talking about, that exits onto Main Street? What is that area, it seems to be the widest area in between the buildings.
He'll answer in rebuttal.
Okay, so is there any reason why, yeah, we would lose a couple of parking spots there, but it seems to be less impact on moving buildings if it was to be put there. That would be another access point, and it would be out on Main Street. To address the parking issue and some of the other concerns that some people have. I know there was some concerns about a three-story building being put next to the two-story houses. What we were, but I'm not saying, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I think there needs to be some changes to make everybody happy and everybody can compromise. If we made it two-story, less units, then our parking issue would be resolved. Back down to forty-eight units, it would be closer to being resolved, and make it a two-story. The other thing, as far as the, the affordable housing. And the amounts that he had proposed up there, I would like to know who enforces those, how long do those numbers last? I'm a general contractor, I have seen in Portland where projects have gone up, and they have to meet a requirement of low income. As twenty percent, I think the one that I've been thinking about, I can't remember the name of it, was twenty percent, had to be dedicated to low income. So, and to make up for that, they just charged a lot more for the other eighty percent. So it's kind of a. I don't know, guess honestly to me, anymore. So my question is, how long do those numbers last, and do they go up only by what the normal standard is, which I think is nine or ten percent per year? That's one of my questions, and how long that affordable housing actually lasts, and how long it's in place for. Others I've seen that I've worked on, was it affordable housing, we came in, remodeled them, they turned around and sold it, turned them into condos. Is that what's going to happen here, and is there a way to get that from here? If we're going to do affordable housing, let's do a practice. Not to bring it with me, but does this code meet the requirements of one fifty-five oh five five A seven? Steve, I guess.
Yes, and as you may have seen in my staff report, staff found that that particular criterion is subjective, because it talks about it being harmonious. And that is not a term that is clear and objective, and so that particular criterion was not applicable to the applicant's proposal.
Okay, so it's not necessarily second, may I have one more question, just one more. As far as the requirements for the Housing Act, is there a population requirement?
Yeah, I think what you're getting at has to do with one ninety-seven A four four five. And if you go into subsection three, what it talks about is if you convert a commercial building into affordable housing, then there is a population threshold for that. So what you're talking about, you're talking about, there's two sections in there, one is subsection three, and one is subsection six. And they need to be read in conjunction with one another, because subsection six refers back to three. And so it's saying, if you're doing three, which is to convert a commercial building into affordable housing, then subsection six applies. And that's where there is a population requirement, but if you're not converting a commercial building to, to affordable housing, then subsection six does not apply.
So there is not a population requirement?
Not for this particular request, because they're not converting an existing commercial building.
Okay, and what, what, was that again?
Yeah, that was one ninety-seven A four four five, subsection three and six.
Okay. Mark, I have more questions, but I'm out of time.
Any questions at the testimony? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else, who should come forward? Please state your name.
Sandy Ross.
You got your address here?
Okay, great, thank you. So saying as what the gentleman before me said, that there's, I have a lot of new questions as opposed to the ones I had before, a lot of those were already answered. So my main concern is the parking and the, the traffic studies that Lonnie was mentioning, that I feel that there should be. Study, the study that was done was a, seems like it was a subset, and I don't know if somebody can talk to that, but seemed like it was a subset based on the amount of. Traffic that was going in and out that, that they, the green light had returned to. But I didn't see where it looked at what is coming into Brin Hill, the space five. And phase five, if we look here, is coming in on Tyrell at the same time, so we have. I think there was forty-eight, I counted, new townhomes that are coming in into phase five about the same time that this will have their construction done. And those forty-eight townhomes, and I'm in a townhome right now there, they use a lot of parking. And that parking is going to come on the other side of the street, and probably on their side of the street. So I'm concerned that there really isn't going to be good parking, and even though, as Chris was talking about, that it fits the city codes. We're already seeing what happened, and I don't know if Lenar fit the city code, and the parking is horrible. And I hear from the neighbors across the street that it's just really hard for them, that we have probably three to four cars per townhome just on north. So when you talk about looking at that traffic, and we've got row houses also on Tyrell right there, that are just now being populated. Nobody's really looked at that traffic, now those on Tyrell are now almost all sold, and so we have the people moving into that. I feel like they need to look at the traffic on the other side and the traffic here, to see about how it fits in. And then, can I point up here, or? Sorry?
Yeah, do you want to use this?
Well, I think I can try to tell. Well, I think I can try to tell. Basically, I want to point to right at Terrell and Main. Both of those access, it's for handicap or whatever access, they can come out so that somebody in a wheelchair or bikes can go up and down. Only one car can go through there at a time. There cannot be two cars. All of us have to stop if we're going through there and wait for another car, because the way you have to swing around from Main to Terrell, it's only one car can get through. So that's a concern. Also for safety, if everybody's coming in and out, there is a backlog and a, you know, backup of traffic. Which is also what it says if you do a full study, that was one of the requirements of the full study, is that if there is a concern about traffic being backed up, and I think there will be a backup there due to that. Um, so that was just one of my concerns, and I don't know if somebody can, um, talk to that. And then the other is just the overall city, you know, like the city plan for this is that we will have all that parking, we will not have a grocery store, we won't have the things, we don't have public transportation. So maybe these are the rule, the rules apply for what Greenlight wants to do, but is the city prepared for this? How do we manage this? It may not be, you know, say no here, but it may be, how do we plan in the future? Um, how this is gonna work when we have so much traffic, we're gonna have a lot more, um, people going through because a lot of us still go all the way through on Brookings or on Terrell to three thirteen, because you're heading to the freeway, you're not heading into town. So we're going the opposite, we're all going through the community and out. So I think those are the, the big ones that I have.
Any questions for the testimony? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I think to continue with what Cindy was saying a little bit, um, I guess these are also questions. Steve, you had mentioned about the population reference, um, about, under a certain population threshold. So I guess my question is, where does it say that the standard applies to all cities?
I'll defer to legal counsel on that one.
Okay.
So they're asking about how state law applies to all cities.
Because the standard, the statute, again, one ninety-seven eight point four four five says, a local government shall allow. It doesn't say cities, doesn't say counties, doesn't say special districts or schools, it says a local government, and North Plains is a local government.
Okay. Second question is kind of regarding the commercial or mixed-use portion. Steve, you and other people, the city have exchanged emails with me about the possibility for mixed use. And I hear that from the applicant, that there is some commercial portion, which I'm assuming you guys think is mixed use. There has also been mentioned by the planning commission tonight about having prior precedents relating to the entrance and how you guys have approved an entrance on Terrell and therefore are leading towards doing that with the current applicant. My question on this is also related to precedents. With the previous applicant that was given, either was, they had, they'd have proposed a larger chunk of commercial, um, space. From what I understand, it was about forty-seven hundred square feet, and the commission asked them to present another four thousand square feet, which was made it not economically feasible for them, therefore they pulled their application. So the last person who applied to use this property had eighty-seven hundred square feet of commercial or mixed-use space. And I know affordable housing regulations and all that, but there were also emails back and forth relating to mixed use, whether the master plan superseded local law or superseded state law, which was adopted after this master plan had been incorporated. So my question is, does precedent apply here as well? And where, where is the mixed use? I mean, having central cultural, having an office is not mixed use in my mind. That seems like something that Oregon Housing Community Services is kind of working with the applicant to make this work. Mixed use, but it's really kind of not that type of thing. So anyways, my, my question is that. Third question. I guess to just kind of take off on that a little bit is, what was the conclusion on mixed use? Like what is, is this really mixed use or is it not? What there, what's being proposed? I think my last, my last topic that I wanted to mention, um, I did, I mentioned that in my written comments as well, that I had received notice, right? I was the last, I took, we just closed on our townhomes yesterday. So technically I'm the legal owner of the townhome across the street from this proposed development. And if the commission does not deny this application, I just want to go on the record that I expect to receive notices of everything that's going on, going forward from here on out. I think that's it. Thank you.
Well, first of all, the, the mixed use question is also that I had a great concern about because, uh, I think they're proposing thirteen hundred and four square feet of commercial space. And that doesn't seem adequate to me. I think that, as you mentioned, the planning commission before, the proposal was for forty-seven hundred, we wanted eighty-five or something. I mean, we actually wanted more, we want like thirteen thousand, but we kind of agreed that we'd accept eighty-five. But I don't think there was ever really a, uh, approved plan. So therefore no access was really approved. It was just, that was a consensus of what we would probably consider for approval, but that was with two access points. So, uh, I moved that to Steve or planner as far as the requirement for the mixed use. Decision on that.
Yeah, I'd be to share, um, in regards to that. The code does not specify anything in terms of a square footage requirement for the mixed use component of this property. It does not go in there and say that there, a percentage of the floor area ratio needs to be reserved for commercial or institutional uses. It does not say that, um, a certain percentage of the building space shall be reserved for commercial or institutional uses. It is also not specified that there's a minimum or maximum square footage required, um, for that. Um, and so based purely on code, purely on code, there's no standard in our code for the mixed use component of this property that says, what is the amount of commercial space that is to be provided to make it a mixed use project for this property? It just indicates that, um, commercial or institutional uses shall be provided, um, to make it a mixed use development. Um, it doesn't talk about the, the uses being located at the ground floor level and the residential units being located above that. That is not in our code, it does not make that specification for that use. So what they propose is essentially a standalone office building, uh, and the leasing building to meet that, uh, requirement of providing a mix of uses on the property. I don't have anything else in my code that I can fall back on to, to try and elaborate on that, to, to extract additional square footages. Now, you know, policies that are written on paper that are not adopted aren't any different than a precedent that was set with the previous land use decision. If it's not tied to a specific criterion in our code that we can require something for, um, it's just arbitrary, if you will. Um, there's nothing there that says you can require that, right? It's just, this is what the city would like to see, but we don't have a criterion that we can tie it to. We just would like to see that. That happened with the previous development. They came in and proposed forty-seven hundred square feet of mixed use space. The planning commission asked that they add an additional four thousand, and they do it as a flex space. And that they asked that they, you know, keep it available for, um, a commercial business to go into up until, uh, I believe it was two to five years after the last occupancy permit was issued for the buildings. And if it was not utilized as commercial space at that time, then it can resort back to residential. That was the condition of approval that this particular finding mission imposed on that development. Well, I shouldn't say this particular, but I don't think everyone was there, but the planning commission at the time did. That particular developer appealed that decision to the city council. Um, they stated their case in terms of what the bank would lend on, what they're able to do, what their capabilities are. Um, the four thousand square feet was, or forty-seven hundred square feet was really the maximum that all the performance demonstrated was, was viable for out here and that the bank was willing to loan on. Um, the city council decided to uphold the planning commission's recommendation, or I should say decision on that, and maintain that condition of approval. And the developer came back to the city and said, well, we, we just can't develop it, or we'll go down to Forest Grove and focus on our project now. Is what they shared with staff.
Go ahead. I just want to make what amounts to a public service announcement. Your comments really raised this issue for me, I haven't really thought about before. All of the laws that I'm familiar with in Oregon required notice to go to the registered owner of the property as shown in the property tax records of the county where it's located. And so a person who's in the property process of buying a property isn't gonna get those notices. It's, uh, I mean, I don't know how else to, to write the laws, how, it's nice to have a, a solid standard that everybody can rely on and go to, and, and the county tax assessors' records are a good source, but it leaves a person like you in the, learn. So tell all your friends, if they're not getting notices, did they put their property in the name of, in the, um, ownership of their personal LLC? Because people do that a lot too, and the LLC's got a post office box, right? So they're not getting the notices, they're going to the post office box. So, um, just be aware that, um, the city legal notices will go to whoever's shown in the tax assessor's records as the owner.
That is what I'm.
Congratulations on your.
As, as a courtesy to the last two people who have testified, I have personally reached out to them and provided them with all the information in advance of the notices going out. I made sure that they knew well in advance when the application was received. I let them know when it was deemed complete. I provided them with copies of all the applicable application materials. Uh, and so I would say that sufficient notice to those two particular individuals was provided. So because you were not listed as the particular owner at the time, that's why they did not pick you up on.
Yeah.
They showed that back with you as well.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's a miswritten law, but whatever. So Steve, my question is, so if, so does the Brin Hill or whatever master plan supersede the affordable housing law as it relates to mixed use?
In what regard?
In relation, in whether or not there needs to be any of it at all.
We determined that, um, based on our conversations, um, with legal. We concluded that the phase one development agreement is applicable, it does apply, and that they do have to provide a mixed use component for the project. Again, though, because our code is silent on anything that has to do with the size of that or the percentage of that or anything for that property. I, I don't have a standard that I can hold on to. And so the simple fact that they propose something that's not residential essentially meets the standard of providing mixed use on the property. I understand your frustration, but I don't have code, I, I have nothing that I can hold their feet to that says you didn't meet a threshold requirement, you did not comply with a clear and objective criterion for this property, because we, we don't have it in the code.
But the planning commission and the city council in the previous one, just as it relates to the mixed use component, held that applicant to the fire.
That was not an affordable housing project.
I understand, but this, this part. You guys said that the, the mixed use portion has, is, is applicable to the Brin Hill master plan prior to the effective date of the affordable housing law that came down.
I don't think that's what we did. We did not make that fine. What we found is regardless of when all those things were adopted, that the, that the development agreement is still in place regardless of the law. The law did not supersede that development regret, uh, requirement that that property be developed as mixed use. That was there. Okay, that was, and that development agreement did not specify anything about the amount of square footages to be required, um, for that property. It just said that it provided that component. In terms of the previous decision, that applicant could have appealed that to Luba, they got a ruling on that, and they chose not to. They chose to let it go because they had other projects that were in the works over in Forest Grove. So they, they walked away from it, they didn't want to spend the money on that, um, essentially that challenge. Um, but again, in terms of staff's position, I am required to review the applications against the applicable criteria that we have in our code. That's, that's my obligation, right? And our code is silent on that. It does not provide a threshold. So when people start requiring things as a condition of approval, that's above and beyond that. Applicants have the right to challenge that and call us out on that. The previous applicant chose not to.
So does the commission have any leeway in requesting more space? Or actually, or requesting that there is actually mixed use in states instead of calling a leasing office mixed use? Which is, it is not.
We, we can only apply what the code requires, and the code does not establish a requirement for what constitutes mixed use. Other than to say it has to have residential, commercial, and/or retail components.
But a leasing office related to apartments.
It's an office space.
They have a leasing space in one of their buildings, and this is a standalone commercial space.
So then, last question, I'll leave this. So if we're talking about all this precedent stuff, clearly up against the law that is very clear, here's the same. Anyways, so what's to say that, so you know, you're required or ask for eighty-seven hundred square feet or whatever it is, what's to say that you asked this applicant to move the entrance to Main? If there's no clear standard, where an entrance?
We do have standards for accesses.
Right, but it doesn't say, does it say that it has to be on trail?
It says that it cannot be in north.
Okay, so can it be on Main?
As proposed, it meets the requirement. If it didn't meet the requirement, we could make that type of finding that it is inadequate because it's not satisfying our particular standards. And then we can ask them to redesign the, um, site plan to a, a different location in compliance with the standards. But because this particular proposed access point satisfied our requirements, staff did not require them to do an additional location, because the fire department also did not make any note of, um, requiring an additional emergency access for their purposes. Staff deferred to the code to find out which was the, you know, the standard that we have to provide for these folks. And the standard was, you can provide one access.
Oh, I'm not asking, I'm not asking for more access, I'm just saying move the access. Is there any? I mean, the thing is, is you've got, like, you, we showed the map up on the screen, right? There were, it was just blank land above there. There are now, whatever it is, sixteen brand-new townhomes across there on the north side of Terrell, of which I own one. And you're putting an entrance to an apartment complex on, it's essentially like, I mean, it's almost, I mean, I don't want to get lost in semantics, whatever, but it's, you know, it's almost a driveway for these townhomes, like, why not on Main?
They could have done that, they could have made that proposal.
So why can't they do it or ask them to?
They can address that in the rebuttal.
We don't have a legal standard that's, that allows us to dictate where they put their access. We can say where you can and put it, there has to be clear vision areas, but we can't say where it must be.
But you could ask, request it. The commission.
Any?
You can always ask, you can always make the requests.
Um, I just, one statement, this, uh, property and the other expansion to the, uh, east were put under the NC neighborhood community zone, which was technically a holding zone until they came up with better plan. And they haven't come up with better plan, and I've been pushing for a better plan ever since, and we're, I think we're gonna make sure we start working on that, especially if we start considering another urban growth expansion, because we'll need new zones to cover that.
To, to that end, the city is working on, uh, getting a grant, uh, from the state to actually update the entire code. Whole code, everything, brand new. Um, our code is pretty antiquated and old. Um, and so some of these concerns that you are bringing up will probably be brought forward in a new code. I know that doesn't help you today, but to the point that, that we hear you, we hear you, we do hear you. And we are working on trying to get a better code in play. Um, and so pay attention to that. When those meetings come up, please come and attend and provide your insight into how we can make the code better.
One other thing I would add too, is I mean, just looking at the plan, I see a fully developed street coming right into it, and. Fully developed street coming right into it and I would say put it down broken, but now there's going to be other people that say, I want to have it down breaking. So you know, you can satisfy everybody, but as long as there's it complies with the code. Sometimes we can't do certain things we'd like to have happen.
And and to get back to that, there was a question I was going to save for later, but if you don't mind, share there was a question about. The width of the driveways for a commercial property and and in our code, when it gets to access, it refers to the public works design standards and. Our public works um chapter. Um, and what that says is it says driveway width, minimum, maximum, commercial. The minimum is fifteen even within the maximum is forty. So I was off by four feet and I apologize for that, but that's the range that they have. To propose a driveway for a commercial project. Um, if it's two way, though, we would not allow it to be at fifteen. We would at least twenty.
Would the two way be thirty maybe? I'm sorry, the. Wouldn't a two way be thirty feet?
It should, but the minimum is twenty fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Hey. Any more opponent testimony? Okay, so fine. I've got your address there. Thank you.
So not to beat a dead horse, uh we go back to the slide um with their development and with the colored pictures. With the with the colored pictures.
Oh, there was.
So was there?
One second. With the uh people online.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there's an access drive down this alley and back out? That's that's a private alley. You're saying that they can drive on that to drive out? Do we have to pay with our homeowners association to maintain those roads, which is a private road residence? That's their access to their garage?
The the plat says that that access easement is reserved to all adjacent properties.
But not that out.
Would not be out. Is it private?
It's track queue. The alley is known as track queue on the plat.
No page.
No queue, just track queue. So you're saying. All I can tell you is what the plat says.
So so we're paying for them to drive down our alleys?
You you'll have to talk to the applicant. I I'm not sure who's paying for what. That's not.
So the maintenance on that comes out of our.
If it were to a public site, the public would pay for it because it's a private street.
There, which is a private road. We can have their cars.
Understand that private roads are the obligation of the uh benefited property owners. Public streets are paid for right above.
You would have to go into the um. I'll be digging a little bit deeper to see how that language is um referring to who maintains that. I would imagine it would be all users, which would mean forty six would contribute to.
So then we have to pay homeowners association to maintain those roads?
They don't actually. That's what I was trying to say.
Exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, they're exempt for anything or from the HOA, the bylaws, anything. That's why it just seems so odd that they were granted access to it.
I mean, when when the project, I assume this is uh when that was a phase one plat?
Yep.
When that phase one plat was approved and recorded. This is the phase one plat. That's all I can tell you. Uh, when the phase one plat was recorded, that area was reserved for the. Private use of the adjacent properties. What what the HOA chose to do afterwards, I, you know, it was not the city's. That was a private agreement between the developer and the property owners.
If they're driving down my property.
I understand that. I'm not sure it's a problem the city can fix. See what I'm saying?
You can fix it by moving the entrance to.
Yeah, so what he was also saying is emergency vehicles are going to run out. Work with fires from the outside. So if that building is on fire, you can't get out there. We can't get out from our house because there's no access out. If there was a access here, they could get out and they could play a fire from there. So we as residents can't get out because that would be blocked. So we would have to wait for all the other residents, plus these guys. Going with nowhere to go, they're going to flood the streets up too, trying to get out for a fire. That's basic.
Well, I'm I just a statement I'll throw out that obviously they're looking at this as an exit point and not looking at. Sending people down your alley, but that's how I don't know how they control that people don't go down your alley. We'll park our cars there. Yeah, well. But that's what I'm just saying is that that's we'll have to have.
So how many, how many do you have to acquire?
Yeah, my concern too, definitely.
And then.
I'm part of this.
We need you at the table if you're going to speak. We can't have.
There's no way you can get entrance for her to come in here.
So you had said that the fire, fire trucks can park down on main and they can come in this way and bring their apparatus. Well, if somebody is having a heart attack in that apartment, they're going to carry him over the grass and out to Main Street. No, they're going to want to come in and park in the parking lot.
That's why it should be the entrance should be on Main Street. But their their parking is like on three fifteen when you're trying to get out onto north. You pull up here, you can see because there's cars parked on both sides. We have to inch out and hopefully the guy that come this way will slow down so you can get out. And we all deal with that daily, even coming out of our alleyways with the streets. You're allowing semi trucks to park in our residential area because they say there's nothing they can do about it. You can't see around the semi truck.
Yeah, somebody's going to die, end up dying. But and also, there's no. Nobody is paying any attention to any stop signs and only request. Somebody to do something about it. They they can't do anything, you know, when.
And then going back to public transportation, yeah, like they said, there's going to be the people trying working in intel, which is great. But there's going to be more than eighteen or twenty eight cars a day going out there because there's no transportation. Now you're asking people that are working in a in um intel and stuff to drive to a rural area. So they're going to put more mileage on their cars, more fuel, more wear and tear on the roads. And now it's going to cost them more to live in affordable housing. Is there's no transportation out here? There's nothing.
I don't disagree with you. I I simply don't have anything to address that with. I I don't have the ability to draw that out into any type of reasonable. Criteria and findings to bring forward your concern. I'm I'm not saying I don't share some of your concerns. I'm saying I'm I'm lacking the availability of applicable criteria that's clear and objective. That I can apply to the project to address your concern.
Right, and if they want to be a good neighbor, they would list our project and address it and make the differences. That's not a big deal. Yes, you're going to have to move some buildings, but safety wise, there's no way you're going to get people out of there now. Once the rest of the townhomes are built and the parking's in there, it's going to be a nightmare.
Well, I think that's a good uh item for the applicant to address in their rebuttal on on the layout and the design and why they chose what they did. Um, as the chair and I have discussed, you know, one potential solution to providing emergency access could be gating Brookings Street. So it's available during an emergency, the gate can come open and there could be access after that. Again, that could um eliminate some parking spaces and the applicant can speak to that. Um, but uh, you know, the again, I. I appreciate everybody's concerns. I hope you don't think that I'm trying to minimize them. I'm trying to share with you where we get into challenges, trying to address your concerns based upon what's available staff to be able to. Write findings and apply code to these projects and sometimes we are handcuffed.
Yeah, well, they know they hit your hands tied.
And I'm not saying you can't ask questions. I'm I I excuse me, last question. It's not that we can't ask the applicant or, you know, share thoughts with them. But at the end of the day, um, they have to design around our standards, you know, and it is their ability to choose how to do that.
So my request would be, since there's, there are so many people that are concerned. I would hope that the decision is not going to be made tonight as the end of your thing said, the decision would. Either be made tonight or be set forward to another meeting or something. Um, I think there's just too many concerns. I think there's. There's so much wrong with it and I'm so concerned about the traffic coming in and out. And like Cindy said, you can't get two cars through one in each direction coming on that corner on Terrell and Main. You can't do it. Unless you have two Volkswagen's. Um, so that's a huge concern and I think these people need to, we all know that it's coming and we can't do anything about it. And the state is said that it's going to happen no matter what. Fine, but please, please work with us. We just need to be heard as well. We were told this was going to be something totally different and we all get bought here. And this is our retirement. This is, we put everything we have into this home. This is our home forever. And then to have, you know, just be blindsided by this is just unfair. It's really unfair.
Yeah, we would and we would have bought here.
And I think Lenar is still not even telling people what's really going on. They're saying they're still silent, saying so they need to be honest with people.
I don't disagree. We've heard a lot of misinformation being shared out there, whether it's um maybe this particular property or a park design or um. Numerous um have, I don't know who's doing it. Um, they're not talking to me. I can share that with you. Um, they're speaking with. You know, the people out there that are selling the project and and I don't know, you know, what they're saying. I just.
Yeah, I mean, that's a probability, but somebody needs to be honest with everybody. And whether it's, you know, what I think another traffic study definitely needs to be done.
Independent.
Yeah.
Do you with anybody's.
Independent traffic study.
Traffic study or an independent traffic study will come up.
We lived in an apartment in Hillsborough while we were waiting for our home to be built. And let me tell you, there's more than two cars to to each unit and people are going to move in and then. They're going to have their, you know, but who's going to control? How many people are going to be moving into that apartment?
Because we see time over time, there's people make their. Move into the apartment, their next life, their fam- families moving in, their brothers and sisters and uncles and move. Bringing all their cars and this is, it's over. And these weren't cheap apartments. They were brand new apartments. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Great. Any other come forward? I live in that property. Can we say that again? Living the property five uh three one five six one Rockwood's Brookings Street. Uh, that's the, you save that law, that's a lot of everything. I support, I I I would give it sort of uh whatever my fellow neighbors have raised the voices. I I second that. Um, so if you if you see the current design, uh the property. If you if you see the side with that uh fifty nine units and the residual graphics from that. And the use of the alley and the torrent, you can see my garage next to that corner. And you can also see within Q uh feet from an out walk, there is a parking. Very next to my property. So I think that's that 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 doesn't feel insecure or that's not, you know. So we need to think about the that design. So I'm talking about that uh, I don't want many details. You can see that uh to us, I guess, uh on red paint and you can see the parking space uh. There is no any physical barrier between the parking space and my house wall. So. Yeah, that 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 pretty, I know, uh, influence my property. So I want. Um, folks to think about the design and uh. Uh, because I I taking into consider the number of roads, you know, in and out from the fifty nine units and the number of. Cars, uh, I can say roughly, if you take about ninety or more than that. Um, running every day through uh from the corner of my garage and having a park next to my house. It it doesn't sound good to me, to my family. Um, so. Yeah, that's my concern and I second whatever my fellow neighbors uh raise the voices regarding the. Park resource, parkings, traffics and all those resources, you know.
And any questions of the test one? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Let's go forward.
I didn't fill out.
That's fine. State your name and address. Please fill out a card before we leave. Okay, well, my name's Jason Lyons. I live at three one five two four Rockwood's Brookings Street.
We talked about harmonious as being subjective. Is safety considered objective or is it subjective in terms of um the need for a additional traffic study?
Turn that. The code indicates that when projects generate trips of three hundred more trips or more, that a detailed traffic study is required. The applicant provided a trip generation letter essentially addressing their project. And based upon the IT manual, which is what we rely on for determining trips. Um, their traffic engineer indicated that only two hundred and twenty two trips would be generated uh by this project. Therefore, it's under the threshold that we require for requiring a full study. Um, so therefore they do not, they're not required to provide that study because their trip threshold is below the three hundred count.
Yeah, I I would agree with Commissioner Noldel though that it would be a good idea to. To do an additional study. I think if we look at the way the community's developed over the last couple of years. What anticipated traffic impacts were before the community was building, what they actually are now. I think there's probably a difference that needs to be looked at. In terms of not only who lives there, but um deliveries, visitors and so forth. The other issue with traffic is that um Altabody has, or we're talking about school, Altabody has room. And that's fine. That doesn't bother me, but we're talking about a community and walking distance to. North Plains Elementary and then we're talking about now we're going to have the bus kids over to Altabody or have people drive their kids over there. So it's just something. You know, as the um community develops and changes, we kind of need to take those things into account in terms of traffic impacts. Are we able to go back to the Google map that shows the roads and the the property?
If if I can, while we're doing that, to answer one of your questions about um traffic studies. Um, one of the key things that traffic studies do um is stays intersections, right? That's what they're trying to determine with the additional trips. Coming into the system is, does the system still work as designed? Are the intersections operating as intended? And are they built to city standards, right, to be able to handle that traffic line that's anticipated? Um, all the streets that surround this property are brand new streets and brand new intersections. Designed to city standards and specifications. And if they're not there now, they're being developed now as part of phase five. Right? So you know that there's some improvements being done right now down at the east end and north at Glencoe and north. That's some of the final improvements that Lenar has to make for that intersection. Um, they have no other intersection requirements to be improved upon. Um, only fixing the rest of North Avenue as it extends west along their property's frontage. There's frontage improvements required for that. Widening the street, putting in the sidewalks, things of that nature to our standards for collector's street. Um, I don't know, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be done. I'm just saying requiring an additional study beyond what's already been done. To study the intersections that have currently been improved to city standards, I would be. Very, very surprised if it said any of these intersections required additional improvements beyond what's currently done for part of the project.
It might be useful in terms of deciding where the entrance should be. When should it be on Main Street? Should it still be on Terrell? Um, because what happens is if we look at the map, most people come. North is considered arterial or.
Uh, yes, north is considered a collector's street.
Collector's street. Okay, so most people come into the community off the collector's street, whether it's main or north. So logically, you would, you know, come in off of. North to main and be easiest to go in off of main entrance. If you're coming in to Terrell, your options to go on main, you're coming all the way up to Terrell coming in. You can come off of Terrell from further down at three fifteen. You can go Brookings. You can go through the um the alleyways that people are trying to back out of. Kids playing those alleyways all the time. So there's a safety aspect of it that does come in. Kids playing those alleyways all the time. So there's a safety aspect of it that does come into play with where that location of the entrance is. You know, whatever citizens lives right in front where that entrance is being, the easement is being widened. It's right in front of this front door. So, you know, that's kind of why I look at it from the safety aspect of things and needing or requesting that another study be done or even having the even having the builder go back and kind of relook at those things in interest. And then the other thing that we kind of talked about today is that the the state laws that they were written, it's kind of tied the city's hands because of, you know, it's written as the city shall do X, Y, Z. And it's skewed towards the financial benefit of the builder and the seller and not so much the community, not so much the people that already live there. And, you know, it's a financial decision for them to put in fifty-nine minutes. They could put in four years if they wanted to. They could do two stories if they wanted to. But financially, they're running a business and it's very profitable to build right now. I mean, you guys had fifteen in the last couple of years that you put out since the laws. So.
Oh, no, not since law.
Oh, okay, but you've been, you've been.
That is a good question. Better one for the minute for me.
Yeah. But in any case, I, I, the one thing the law does address, and I can't remember the exact timeframe, but it does request that in terms of affordable housing, that the builder whoever's responsible for it makes sure that that stays in place as affordable housing. I can't remember if it was thirty or sixty years. It's some, I'll get that by the time it's done.
Thirty years.
Anyways, I, I'd like the builder to be able to kind of answer to how that would be able to stay in place for that period of time, being that they've been doing this for a relatively short period of time. And who's responsible for that and, and, you know.
Yeah, I think the applicant can answer that because the, where the dollars are coming from and how that's managed. But a good question for the applicant.
Yeah, it's more so, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw the dollar piece in it, but that's the reality of it. It's more so, you know, how do you manage that over thirty years? Most people are going to be living in this community for fifteen years and they might want to know, is this going? I think the question that came up, is it going to continue to be affordable housing? Is somebody going to buy it out and turn it into condominiums or something? I, reading over the state law, I don't know. It's relatively ambiguous in terms of, you know, how it's written. It's relatively short. There's not a lot of explanation to it. So and I don't know, Mr. Green, if you have anything to add to that in terms of what that means from the, from the legal side.
What's that?
The builder having to maintain affordable housing for a thirty year period.
So the statute says that the affordable housing elements have to be guaranteed through an affordable housing covenant described in O R S four fifty-six point two seventy, which is a nonpossessory interest in real property that it poses limitations, restrictions or affirmative obligations on the property. The covenant is held by a public body, for example, North Plains, an agency of the US government, a public benefit corporation. So there's a third party entity with the ability to enforce the covenant. Does that answer your question? And the duration is thirty years. The covenant has to be.
So does that mean that North Plains is the third party?
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay. So will that be defined as the process moves forward or?
There has to be a, a, an affordable housing covenant or the project doesn't.
The applicant is indicating that they can respond to that question.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for the test one?
Thank you, sir.
Make sure it's a lot of. Anyone else wishing to testify in opposition? Anyone else wishing to testify or against neutral?
We're not seeing any here right now on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Would that applicant come up for rebuttal?
Let me state my name again. Yeah, thank you for the concerns. You know, we do appreciate them. We did listen to feedback. They were meaning we listened to feedback. I understand that sometimes it may not feel that way and I apologize, but we do listen to it. Couple of questions that came up, kind of just going down my notes. Mr. Shirts, I'm going to ask what that area was in the southwest corner. It's land saving. There's a walkway there to the sidewalks that families can walk down to. And also it kind of came up, Mr. Shirts and others too, kind of along this line of affordability. So just let me clarify. I apologize. I actually have that in my notes for my presentation. Sometimes I get nervous and skip around. So Green, Greenlight is going to be the owner of this development for the foreseeable future. We don't sell our properties. We don't build and just hand out the keys to someone else. We will be only, we will be your neighbors. We will be here. The project, the development will be deemed restricted for thirty years per Oregon State funding. This is, this is called local innovation backtrack funding. It's designed to get towns built fast. There's a thirty year deed covenant and then there's another thirty, second thirty years as part of that loan process. So really it's going to be a sixty year process. If at thirty years we decide that we don't want to continue for another thirty years, we have to pay back full amount and which is not the intention. So in our underwriting, that is vetted by the state department of justice. You know, we plan significant fund for capital expense, maintenance repairs. There's a maintenance closet. There's a maintenance team involved here. We plan for the ownership for the operations for thirty years out and then there's usually a reset. So the, all that is, I understood taken into account, but it's also examined very, very thoroughly by many affordable housing folks. So it's really a sixty year deed restricted on the property. And can't, it can't, no one, you can't just sell it to someone to go put it to market rate. Going down my list here, just kind of in the, in the, oh yeah, so who qualifies? This is actually a really good one that I skipped. I apologize. This is a very, you know, when kind of aside of who lives here. So any of us, a lot of us have lived in apartments, I imagine, I, I personally, and you know, or rented a house. And you have to go apply for, for your home, right? You have to fill out an application. You have to fill out your proof of income, your occupation. All of that is the same here. So any tenant comes in, they have to fill out a standard application. There has to be proof of income, recurrent income. There's credit checks, financial credit checks. There's rental history pulled and references checked. And there's also criminal background checks. You have to pass all those. There's no to, to qualify for this. It's just the same as going and renting at a market rate. Obviously, there's, you know, it's a different process. There's compliance issues. So our property management team is specialized in affordable housing. There's compliance issues. Every single year we have certifications to the state that shows our tenants, that shows their income levels. And we have to prove that we're meeting that affordability to the state. Otherwise, we owe them millions and millions and millions of dollars. And then also too, what's great about this affordable housing program is that if someone moves in and qualifies for rent, they get a promotion at their work. They don't get kicked out. We're not asking them to leave. They're allowed to stay by state law and, and by this program. The goal is to create a stepping stone. So if someone moves in, does well, uses this ability to have affordable, safe, secure housing, get a job, increase, you know, better their life, they're allowed to stay. Ideally, then like eventually they'll save up money and, you know, decide to continue the house, continue. You know, parking and traffic, we heard from many, many residents, we understand it's a concern and I, and I promise you we take this into consideration even though you disagree with us. This traffic, as Steve mentioned, this master plan went through a major traffic analysis. This site was designed for traffic. The streets were designed for this. Our alleyway, our entrance, that everyone's calling an alleyway, is twenty-six foot wide. That is wider on Brookings Street, my understanding. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty confident. Is that, I think, I think the Brookings Street is twenty-eight or thirty feet, but there's parking on both sides. So if you add two cars in at nine feet on each side, that's eighteen feet out of thirty, that, that street's pretty narrow, right? So our, our entrance to the property is twenty-six feet with no parking on either side. So it's it meets the standards. It's above the fifteen feet minimum and below the thirty, but maximum.
Fifteen to forty.
Fifteen, forty, sorry. And then, and then, yeah, just want to clarify, that is a commercial building that is an office for Central Cultural. Are leasing, I think, Mr. Commissioner King responded to that for us, but the leasing office is not in that commercial. That is a purely commercial building for, for the partner, Central Cultural. On track view, this gentleman's back here, the question of that alleyway. This is something I think I would love, we would love to have a conversation with his neighbors. You know, we started looking at that and wondering about that too, like what's to keep traffic from going east, west in the alleyway? It's really something we have to work out with the H O A, yourselves, fire, safety, whether it's a bolt, like an emergency baller or some sort of, you know, we'd be interested in having a conversation. We understand we want you all to, you know, we don't want cars going down your al- that alley as well. The fire issue, I think we addressed it early on. All those buildings that have been approved by T B F and R. If I'm not right, T B R. But they're also sprinklers. So that is, you know, safety again is, is our, is our concern. And then the last one that kind of brought, brought up about busing kids to this other school. We, we've confirmed with Hillsborough School, North Plains Elementary has capacity. So our, our hope and attention is that folks are, kids are walking down the streets, North Plains Elementary. I think I addressed the majority of questions. If I can.
Hey, guys. And you think that this gentleman had a question about the Portland Inclusionary Housing Project, where you build, you know, twenty percent of your units are restricted. We just wanted to clarify that that is a separate law that Portland has for buildings of a certain size. And that exact concern where you could, you know, convert those back to market rate and do other things with those, that is a feature of that program. Essentially, they require twenty percent of the units that you're putting up in a market rate unit for building to be affordable to an eighty percent A M I threshold. But this project that we are doing is what we sort of in the industry refer to as quote affordable housing. And that just means that all the units have rent restrictions on them. It's a certain length of time. It comes to accountability for funding from the state and other programs. And so that inclusionary housing program is just a city law in Portland and it's not applicable here. But I do think that was a good point about the concerns that I think are relevant with programs like that.
I'm sad. We take our design very serious. We're very proud of the design. We're very proud of the homes that we build. And, and, you know, we want to stress that we're building to code that was set in place and.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we did consider and it didn't work out. We really did. We have, and so this, this makes the most, most sense in the design.
But I don't really understand why it didn't work out.
I mean, there's many reasons, you know, it's going to get into like subjective criteria, which I don't think is going to benefit anyone here. But really, reality is, you know, parking is a big issue. So lots of parking is an issue. And we're designing to code. It's allowed to be there. We think it's a good design. And again, part, part of that is, you know, one of those things, moving the houses for the way, getting apartments for the way from the houses, get more space, more give buffer, more screen. So.
For being a good neighbor, I mean, everybody's complaining about this. One of the big things would be, seem like it would be a, a really good thing to do as that being one of the huge complaints.
And I think you heard from people that the reasons you listed for not going that route, everyone seemed to say we would accept those trade offs. We would rather have on Main, accept those trade offs of whatever it might be. You can ask again, but compared to being a good neighbor, it seemed like if you really, if those really are the trade offs, people are in favor of it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. I think you're right. I think this small group or this group here doesn't represent, you know, the whole city of North Plains. I do hear those concerns and I don't have, I mean, in fact, I was like, I, I can't change our whole site plan and development right here, right now. You know, I can tell you that we've looked at it. It wasn't just like, oh, it doesn't work. Let's do this. It was, we looked at it. We analyzed it. We, you know.
Can, can you provide that design version for us?
Do you want to see? You want to see a copy of it?
Sure, it would be useful.
I'm sure it can be a file. I don't understand what that would purpose that was there, but I, I mean personally, I would have to.
Well, and also you said you're over the allotted parking spaces already that are required by the city. So if, you know, removing a couple of parking spaces to make up for an entrance on Main Street would make it adequate to the number that we require, then I don't see what the loss is.
Yeah, so we are, yeah. Oh, Scotch Hall or sixteen forty-five Northwest Fourth Street. Yeah, so we're just slightly over the required parking. And so before when I mentioned like the four stalls, that's just for the twenty-six foot wide street to get out. And then so we'd also be removing those other stalls on the street. So then that's also further reducing a premium as below, potentially below that number. But there's also other areas that are moving, such as the residential buildings are different dimensions, much wider. So those end up going up towards the top, that's shrinking the stuff or shrinking the lot to the south. So we're removing stalls there potentially. And then we also have other requirements. Depending where the zoning setbacks are, those could change depending on the entrances. And then there's others like the outdoor space and greenery that we also have to move. So it's, it's, there's just a lot of moving parts.
I think I'm confused. Did you have a version of an entrance on Main that meant the requirements for parking?
I don't think one that met the requirements for the parking. Yeah, we have, we have plenty of preliminary studies, but as Tim mentioned, it didn't, it didn't work.
Also, if you take away Terrell, you need parking spots there.
We can't put them there because we have that access easement. So we can't park over that. We can't keep that easement at all. So we're actually taking that easement, because that easement's on our property, that ten, the ten feet of it.
To go back to the picture, there's actually, if cars are going through there too wide, there's at least two or three spaces there.
No, so. Yeah, if we could, go run up there and then you have a point added. It's that's a lot easier.
I'd rather not to speak to that. That is the access easement plus track queue issue. And so both of those are allowed to be used for access, but we couldn't take that away from the other folks that own lots that have rights to access those. They have to be left open for access, even if we don't use them. So we couldn't actually replace those with parking. If that makes sense.
So we need to be in to Terrell.
Yeah, so this is our property line right here. That's pretty much going down, over, over one, that one, the thicker one. So that's going down. So majority of the current access into this alley is on our property through that ten foot easement. So we're widening it as Tim mentioned, to the twenty-six feet for two-way traffic. So we only, I'd say, you know, you know, four feet beyond that easement. So it would be sufficient to have additional parking there without blocking the existing easement. Then they need access to get into that alleyway.
Any other questions, comment?
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, what is the decision of the planning commission? Are you ready to make decisions? Do you need more information?
One more question for the staff.
Okay.
So we have two hundred and twenty-two trips. That's three point seven six trips a day per, I don't. That's three point seven six trips a day per, I don't know what, because I don't know the units, I did, or the fifty-nine units, right? So, but based off bedrooms, so how, some a three bedroom could have three vehicles. And a one bedroom might only have one, but could have two. And so that number seems way off the national average for trips per day. Especially in a bedroom community with no public transportation. So how are we coming up with it then, and this is just okay?
Again, based on the criteria that we have, review the application against, they provided the necessary trip generation letter for their project to demonstrate what the impacts would be from that project. And it was below the threshold that required a full transportation study. And so in terms of staff's ability, for example, if it said three hundred and they did not provide transportation study, I would have deemed it incomplete on that, and that issue, right? And required them to go out and do a full transportation study and bring that information forward. I, I don't know what more I can do, you know, based upon what the rules allow me to do.
North Avenue, not, not just in the subdivision, but on North Avenue. Because we have, like I said, we have more developments since two thousand and eighteen, when the study was done. Down on three hundred and twenty-fifth, the end of Palosco was done, new housing. And so we can't keep piggybacking on the top of somebody else's study was done six years ago. And we actually have more houses actually in Brent Hill than what I believe the original was. Because when I look through here, it says maximum five hundred and eight houses. The traffic study with the master plan that was on there, and I don't know if that was the approval, but there's more than that in there.
When we get five hundred and five units in Brent Hill, that's the maximum number of lots.
I don't know, I don't know how many, how many lots are in there without this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, not counting, well, actually counting this lot, actually counting this lot, there's five hundred and five.
So based off what traffic is on North Avenue, we can't require that there be, anyway, we just take a piece of paper that somebody just sent over and said, yeah, this looks good.
They actually are traffic engineers with certifications that mean a lot to them, and I doubt they would lie. I mean, if they were found to, to do something like that, they would, you know, potentially lose their credentials, which is the lifeline of their job. Is their stamp. And so we do rely, it is an important document. We rely on their professionalism and, and their expertise to bring forward the technical information that's required for the application. When you do a project like this, it's based on the impacts of the project, right? It's based upon what is this project bringing to the transportation system? And that's what they base that study on, that's what they base that letter on, is that project. And the project was found to be below our threshold for requiring a full traffic study. Again, I, I don't have anything else that I can, I can't go out there and say, I don't believe your traffic engineer is being truthful in their transportation letters, so therefore I'm not gonna accept it, and I'm going to sit there and require you to do a full blown study. I, I wouldn't be able to do that.
Any other question? So is the planning commission prepared to move forward, or they need more information? I mean, I'm kind of concerned that their traffic engineer wasn't here to answer my question about how forty-eight units produces more traffic than fifty-nine affordable housing units, but if I can answer that. Obviously, there's concerns about access, there's some concerns about secondary access with Brookings Street and maybe a fire gate that's discussed, so I'm not sure if this is the time to request more information or?
This, this would be the time to maybe bring, if we'd like to talk with them about that. You know, you could kind of discuss, would you do this, could you bring this forward? Would you be willing to redesign your layout to put a, an emergency access gate somewhere? This is your time to ask those questions, and is there time to decide if they're willing to make any adjustments to their plan?
What is the feeling of the planning commission? I think we asked if they were willing to be a good neighbor and to consider what they've heard from the community and even consider what they themselves think would be a better solution, and they've said no. Unless I'm reading it wrong. I think you said no, you're unwilling to consider, and it turns out that they. Am I allowed to? We're not asking, yeah, asking the question. Is there other things we would want to ask? Well, I, like I mentioned, I think that there should be some least thought about a secondary access somehow, be it emergency or not be it emergency. But if Callan Valley Fire District is, has accepted the plan, I'm not sure if we can ask for it, but, I mean, we can ask for it, but can't require it, I guess.
Correct, that's, that's kind of where this is at. It's more of a, do you agree with what you've heard and is, are you willing to make a design modification to your plan to address those concerns? That is what I'm hearing from the planning commission right now.
I believe that's probably where we're at.
And all the findings in the staff report were based on the development agreement, was there anything in the master plan agreements that might have additional information? Because it just seems like, well, just like the access on Main, it just seems like we've talked about this, and that's why I just.
I did not come across anything in those agreements that spoke about lot forty-six specifically having to take direct access from any particular street. I did not find that in those agreements that were, it called this line out specifically and required an access to a specific street that was not in the agreements.
The master plan refinements, so it wasn't any of those.
None, none of the agreements that we reviewed, whether it was the master plan or phase one, because those are really the only two that apply to this property. It did not specifically call out lot forty-six for a required access.
We've had this discussion on access on Main, that's, it's so.
It may have been in the context of prior application, for which you had a hearing, here, I'm sure that. But the, the development agreements and master plan themselves require this property to be mixed use. It, it is, for context at least, useful to know that when you originally approached the proposal, the residential. The assumption is that the city standards will control those.
It's interesting too, when you look at some of those master plan agreements, it actually talked about parking spaces for that lot for the mixed use, but didn't actually call out the size of the building or the mixed use area. I don't know how it could come up with parking space numbers without having some kind of indication of mixed use square footage.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought Chris just said.
Sorry.
You're talking about the master plan development agreement and what was?
Development agreement, I'm talking about all the master plan refinements that we've gone through. And every time they came back with modified parking spaces and, and that particular site was given a parking space count. How can they be given a parking space count without having some indication of the size of the next use?
I couldn't find anything in the development agreements for the master plan or the phase one that memorialized any type of parking threshold standard for this particular lot. It was not in those agreements, it was not there. I'm not saying you did not discuss them, I'm not saying those conversations weren't had, but nothing was memorialized in those agreements for this property that said, if you develop, let's say, forty-eight units on this property, that you shall provide at a minimum an X number of parking spaces for those forty-eight units. That was just not in those agreements. Not that you maybe did not intend for that to happen, but that didn't get put into the agreements that were signed and recorded.
That's part of the problem with those agreements being general. Your final findings, they are so general, they don't spell out what we specifically as a body expect to see within the development itself.
I can, you know, again, since I was not here, I can attest to any of that. I can just go off of what is available, and the best available information is the reported agreements.
I'm just saying in general, when we have our, when we have hearings and we have our final findings that go to, to council or whoever needs to be the final authority on it, they're very general. They don't specify specific language and, and descriptions of areas of concern or special, special areas of note that we modify, it's just very general.
If the planning commission has specific finding they would like to bring forward, they can do that. But the planning commission has a specific condition of approval they would like to bring forward. They could do that, I would just advise you that if you do bring forward any conditions of approval, they do need to be clear and objective, just like the criteria does, it can't be a subjective condition of approval. You, you have that ability. And, and worldwide findings around that, it, it does need to be tied to an applicable criteria that's clear and objective, and we can write a finding for that. At this time, the planning commission is the decision-making body unless it's appealed.
Stuart, just for a point of clarification for this evening, we're looking for either a recommendation or an agreement or to ask staff for additional information or continuance, what, what, how exactly should we?
Well, if you feel that you need additional information, be it from the applicant, be it from, for instance, their traffic engineer is not here, be it from staff to review something, you could request a continuance to date certain days. Are we on, just starting? Maybe date certain would be our next meeting on December the eleventh.
It's, oh, shoot, wrong, sorry. This is February, I know that, I just can't remember the exact day.
Yeah, so we've got that.
I think, so the traffic.
It's February twenty, February twenty-four, twenty-five, excuse me, I actually have that miswritten in the staff report, I have it as February twenty-four. That's there, it's February twentieth, twenty-five, is the hundred and twentieth day of this application.
Continue and rebuttal?
Yeah, that's okay, just to address a lot of concerns, so you want to speak to that first?
I think your question is a good one about how can fifty-nine units of housing have a different traffic impact or trip count than forty-eight units of housing? And the code is clear and tells traffic engineers how they are supposed to do their calculations. The International Traffic Engineering, it's a manual, it's called the ITE is what we refer to it. And the ITE has codes for lots of different types of uses. The ones that were used, I think you'll see it in the traffic study that was put together, it actually says ITE code and then it'll give you a, a number. And so for affordable housing and affordable housing with mixed use, there are different codes. For low-rise multifamily housing, there is a different code. And so the traffic engineer is required when they're generating the trips through this trip count that you're required to do under code to use the ITE codes and what they spit out. And so I think it's a situation where if you, again, have, have a scenario where you're generating a lot of trips, so in excess of the city's standards, then there's some refinement to kind of, well, here was a reasonable gas based on that ITE number that we require everyone to use as their first pass, and then we do a full traffic study after that, if you're seeing like, you know, a thousand trips, and then they're trying to figure out where they go. But the reason that you see that discrepancy is because that's required by the code that our traffic engineer actually rely on those numbers that are set by this International Board of Traffic Engineers. So I don't know if that's helpful, but that is where that discrepancy goes.
Well, I understand why, but I just don't understand how it can be. I mean, I, I know you're taking that out of the book, but I just don't understand how.
But then I don't think our traffic engineers are gonna be able to answer specifically either.
I, I just know that I, the code tells you that's how you calculate this, and so that's, I think, what the engineers are required to do when they actually put together those. And I don't know if the city has a traffic engineer that would have worked with our traffic engineer and, and talked through this, I don't know.
We, we did share the application with our contract engineer, three J, and he did review it, he did not have comment on it.
Okay.
Yeah, to Commissioner Miller's question earlier about, you know, obviously the main concern, and sorry, Commissioner Nono as well. Sorry for mispronouncing that. You know, I think, you know, our goal is to, is obviously to build this, this community and these homes, we think it's gonna be truly a great nation. So, and we hear the concerns. I think we would be willing as a condition of approval tonight to, to set some clear and objective standards and just take a study and look at that entrance off Main. But I think our clear and conditioning kind of approval criteria would say that it can't reduce unit count and it can't reduce parking ratio. So if we can achieve the unit count and the parking ratio we have with this design and make us an access off, off Main, I think we're, we're interested in that in a condition of approval.
Do you mean it can't reduce parking count in such a way that it violates the requirement or?
From our current design standard now.
And I think to be fair, our current design is, I think we started the night with quite a few extra parking spaces, but then for the stormwater easement, where I think we've agreed to remove those too. I don't think we have a whole lot of access anymore, Scott is shaking his head, okay.
So, so it is, I did the same, it is saying, hey, we'd be willing to look at it, but we can't below, go below the number that it's required.
Yeah, I, I think we'd say where current.
Where a current design is at.
Yeah, including the reduction of those two spaces for the stormwater, which, I, do you know what the total number is right now?
I think we're onsite, I think it's.
That's the one.
Do you talk about the parking code?
Three O.
Yes, I think our.
So that's, that is one fifty-five point six seven three A for residential and E for commercial. Those, those are the two that establish the, the parking thresholds for the uses. And what we found there was that you had, you had a total of fifteen one-bedroom units, fourteen two-bedroom units and thirty-three bedroom units for the fifty-nine units. For the one-bedroom units, it required fifteen parking spaces or one space per unit. For the two-bedroom units, it required twenty-four point five parking spaces or twenty-five, because we round up. And that was at a threshold of one point seven five spaces per two-bedroom unit. The three-bedroom units require sixty parking spaces, and that's parked at a threshold of two spaces per unit, which requires a total of ninety-nine and a half spaces or one hundred parking spaces for that particular unit count and, and, and room configuration. As far as the additional leasing space goes, that would require one parking space. The standalone office would require one point six three or two for that. So that's an additional three parking spaces, which gets you to a hundred and three parking spaces. The applicant did elect to utilize the on-street parking reduction standard that's in our code. And so for every on-street parking space that they can identify adjacent to the property can be utilized. They identified twenty-eight between Main and Tyrell. So that reduced the parking requirement by fourteen, because you get a half space reduction for every on-street space. So once that was calculated in, the hundred and three minus fourteen created a need of eighty-nine parking spaces, provided they can do any adjustments to this parking configuration and maintain eighty-nine off-street parking spaces and maintain the amount of on-street parking spaces that they require, I mean, that they're proposing to utilize, then their project would comply with our code.
Or changing the ratio, if they took out two and had one.
It could be, so, I mean, that would be up to them. You know, I don't know how that's going to play out, but that would be the math.
Okay, and what is today the proposal?
I, I think we're, we're current, that number that was offsite is accurate. And then right now with the reductions we talked about today, there are ninety-two spaces. But I, I think that we're probably okay with either maintaining that ninety-two. But the critical thing is to make sure that we do actually meet the clear and objective standard with that combination of on-street and on-site parking.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention that they are offering twenty, I mean ninety-four, ninety-four off-street parking spaces right now.
It's tons of for the reduction.
So they have, they have some flexibility with losing spaces. And right now they're probably going to lose the two spaces that are in the easement, so that would get them down to ninety-two. So there's a little bit of like three spaces left.
And we have a little flexibility as well. I mean, for parking, so we figured out how to.
The only other option that would be potentially available would be a variance to the parking requirement to go below. And that would be up to the planning commission on how they would like to handle that. But it, I mean, it would essentially require them to submit a new application, so I don't think they're going to want to do that.
And parking's been a concern of everyone here. We, we all came to conclude that, you know, housing or cars are needed. And so it's, it's a fine balance.
Yeah, we would prefer to keep as many spaces as we can, and that's part of what we're, the design is trying to maximize that.
To me, it's just more of a safety concern, so it's a bald entrance out of Terrell. So correct, you can only get one car through there, especially I drive a truck. And there's no way that the bull's second is going to go next to my truck when I'm there. So that traffic is going to be just horrific. And then we have the corner on the alley. It's an issue, so it's up to the real safety concern and traffic flow concern a little bit as well. So the children are going to be walking to school that direction and all those kind of things, so.
So I do, I think we appreciate your willingness to take a look at that. I don't know. Commission, that's it. My recommendation had a move forward given their willingness to take a look at that. Change.
Well, one of the things I have a big concern about that was brought up is the traffic heading east on track Q. And I definitely want that addressed in, in the future plan, but definitely want to make that a condition. Also, as I mentioned before, would like to see a condition applicable, the fire gate access on Brookings Street for a secondary or safety, but if we can't enforce it, we can't enforce it. Those are my big concerns and things that I'd like to see.
Yeah, I think, you know, there, there doesn't, I would imagine that the applicant could potentially be open-minded to putting some type of emergency access on Brookings. However, I looked at that just now as you were talking and it would eliminate at least by parking spaces to provide an access through that area to, you know, because what they'd have to do is right now, the way the plan is been proposed is that would be a landscape strip right there, right, and a curve and all that. So in order to get through that area, you'd have to take the landscaping out and, and then potentially eliminate those spaces. Because if it's not available because someone's parked there, then we haven't really accomplished the goal, right? And so I'm not quite sure they would be amenable to that idea.
I, I think what could occur to address your concern, Chair King, is if the entrance was, they were able to manage it through Main, then you would have the secondary emergency help. Help the current entrance.
Potentially.
What's that?
Potentially, right?
Yeah.
There's a parking, so they have to park in and build it.
Yeah, because there, you know, there's, there's no, there wouldn't be no necessary loss of parking there because they can't. I think you said that you couldn't put parking on that anyway, so you can maybe use that as an emergency.
Yeah, to, to address that, I think that right now sort of the, the overage beyond the two areas that are providing access to others that we could obviously not convert to parking is, it's what, four or five feet? So you obviously couldn't with the current site plan add parking there. But if we are reconfiguring things, we probably would need to put up the parking to that, the edge of the access for the other folks that has to be maintained. And so I think that the access would be smaller there, but yeah, it potentially could work, so.
I think the other thing.
Full chair, full chair. You guys, you're saying.
So you asked who we do a variance or something, gives you really help parking. I think, Steve, we could not require parking on the.
Sorry, another thing we keep in mind is there is also a sewer, sanitary sewer easement that goes up track Q to Terrell. And so if you put parking there, we're going to run into the same issue. We just ask them to remove parking on. So.
So I think you were talking about possibly asking to remove parking here.
The, the two right-hand side was. Yeah.
We started to really there. If needed, it just means we have to pair up something if, if something goes wrong, right? We have some risk there. But there's no reason we couldn't grant the leave to keep those two slots.
Frank, I'm not sure we can because one of them, we'd have to get CWS's consent for that. Because one of them is a CWS easement. And there's, frankly, there's another sewer easement to that north, underneath that north or adjacent to that north exit. Access. That's also a CWS.
Pending an issue with CWS, I guess.
Yeah.
That comes all the time in parking lots. You're parked on a pipe, a drain pipe, all the time.
You know, can we just storm break? I think that would probably be fine, but these are sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
And then yes, that with that, with the connection, if ever to move just that width where the commercial building is, since that's narrower, that will end up pushing that parking down, which could effectively get the residential moved up there. So then that, that effectively ends up blocking access to that alley if it was to be an emergency secondary. And then TBFR is also very clear in what they, their routes. And they wouldn't consider either of those to be acceptable on their routes. That's why they're serving us off of North Main and Terrell for their width and their turning radiuses to get there. So that's also one of the reasons our buildings aren't as close as we can, following the zoning setback. So they have their hose line to get into the buildings. And so, yeah, we're, we're happy to commit to studying it. I think our, our clear and objective condition is that we don't go below parking requirements, that we don't lose unit count. And then also that TBA, you know. That's a really good question. I, I think that's going to serve the community really well. What would be the purpose there?
Actually, just going to be saying that if the community had to give up some of that commercial space in exchange for the entrance off of Main, I think they would probably do that, but it's four more, four more parking, but we, we don't need to answer that now.
Yeah, I can't answer that now. We'd have to look at it and talk to the partners and understanding it.
But you're willing to put that into the equation of possibly moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I think for us, it's the, the, the unit mass of the apartments, but also like, you know, this, we're trying to create a community here too. So if we start taking away like the playground or the community, the commercial aspect for the partners, if it all then kind of, you know, start moving parking on the street, it all, it all filters that way. No, I think this is a pretty good solution with a condition of approval.
It's, I mean, the planning commission is making the decision if we either want to make the decision tonight to continue to get some of these answers. My concern, like I said, is the east movement on track Q. I'd like to see that resolved before I made a decision. Sounds like we have some Commissioner Miller has concerns about possible changing the plan. And I'd like to see if that's the viable option, so.
Did we, did we get a, a solid answer on the park, on the house, the unit count for the Brent Hill development?
No, we don't know that either.
We don't know that either.
Which is an assumption. But we're, like I said, if we're adding forty-four hundred square feet of required municipal park, I don't know if we Brent Hill.
No, I think, I think what the question is if they're adding eleven units beyond what was anticipated previously, does that trigger anything in terms of additional park space for, for this project?
Yeah, well, the requirement for municipal parks is for this project is five thousand square feet per acre plus two hundred square feet per unit.
What, what I need to do?
That's an additional forty-four hundred.
Yes, we.
And dig that up and, and work through that with Chris a little bit to find out how it applies to the project. So I'd have to, you know, and again, I, I relied, I relayed on, on the previous planner and their knowledge. And that was what was shared with me, was that it was their understanding that all the parks for the project were already addressed.
Right, at the time that it was a maximum of forty-four years.
No, I understand. And we, we talked about, we talked about forty-eight and, and fifty-nine. And the, the message I received was it, it should already be addressed. And there's no additional, so we can go and look into that.
I was going to say, I think we addressed that originally, like when we first started talking about this prop, this progress development. And with the master plan, it was PCD was the firm. And again, I looked through my emails as we were sitting here and it was approved for five point one six. There's built one point, five point one six acres of park, the requirement currently with the master plan is requirement. So there is quarter acre overage, which I think. So therefore the amount of units added is still not required. I think that's, I think there's communication or emails from.
So what is the decision of the planning commission? Make a decision tonight, continue to get the answer.
I would prefer to continue to get smart answers.
Commissioner Miller.
I continue to get smart answers and see what design I can come up with.
Commissioner Miller.
I'm inclined to I'm inclined to want to see a potential version with at least giving them some good faith that from my perspective, if you did a good faith that you tried to get that and came back with that, that at least from my seat, I would be willing to move forward with, with an approval at that point in time. I know I'm not giving you a official approval tonight, but I'm saying I'd be inclined to do that if you did a good faith effort to try to get the.
I think also if, if we were doing condition approval, it would take time for them to prepare that.
Okay.
Commissioner, how?
I'm, I'm not saying that I want to look at those alleys with a temporary barricade or something so that the people that live on there don't have traffic. And I also want to look at a different evenness into that facility. I think that, that one sucks. They need to look at it. Technical term.
Ditto on that one. Staff, I mean, I understand that if we look at conditions that you take time to, need to prepare those.
So what I have is one thing that you'd like to continue the carrying on, if that's what you want to do, would be to get some clarification on the park space and does this project trigger any additional park space in the project?
Yeah.
What were the, I, I could not hear all the other ones that people would like to continue on.
The other, one of the others is the concern of eastbound traffic out of this subdivision on track Q to prevent that from happening.
So are you making a request of the applicant to provide information to you? Is that the?
Well, they, they need to resolve that issue because right now that access is wide open to their tract behind their garages. And so they need to have that resolved, I think, for, for safety reasons and so the peace of mind. Because right now there's nothing to prevent vehicles from exits, exiting out of that. And if you have multiple vehicles trying to go at the same time, some are going to go that way, some are going to go that way. I'd also.
Sure, yeah, I, I think that's a request of the applicant, correct?
Right, yeah, yeah, right. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's just one of the concerns we have. And then I just want to add the concern at the intersection of Main and Terrell. I want to have that measured and find out. I know it's supposedly standard, but I'd like to get confirmation, but because I know that boltouts are to make safety for trap, for pedestrians. But if it's, was it physically built correct? I just like confirmation on that.
So you, so I can work with the, our consultant, three J, because they were the ones who ultimately bought, you know, and said that that was.
Maybe somebody who go out there with.
And so I will consult with.
Public Works, look at it, just make sure that it done to the standard that it was supposed to be. Because if that's, I know it's a traffic bottleneck because it's designed for pedestrian safety, but if it's.
But it shouldn't reduce it down to one of the.
Yeah, you should be able to still get two cars through.
I agree. The, the, the boltouts shouldn't create that.
It's just, I noticed, just looking at the, the picture right here, the boltouts on that intersection are a lot bigger than the other intersections in that subdivision. So that's just a concern I have in that intersection.
Yeah, so staff will look into that with both Public Works and our engineer and get a essentially a finding from them on the conditions of that boltout and, and the street design.
And then of course, Commissioner Miller's comment about the possibility of a second access. I mean, they've not required to do it, but I think it's good faith. It'd be nice to see it.
So, yeah, that would be for the applicant to see if they could come up with a redesign that could potentially provide a secondary access and still comply.
Right. It can be the prime, it can be the primary access. It doesn't have to be the second. We're not asking, we're not asking for two.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the secondary access.
Second, so it means the second one.
An alternate option. An alternate option.
Yeah, okay, of a single access point.
Yes, an alternative option, same access point. That's what we're.
Whatever you want to say.
Yeah.
That's for you.
Was there any other concerns? Now, I understand the whole deal about the using traffic guide thing and plug it in numbers, so it's probably not something that your traffic engineer is going to be, explain to me anyway. But, so I think we can let that one go. Anything else? Well, that's up to you. I'm saying, I don't, I don't believe.
Public sense tells me it's not that.
Well, that's right, exactly.
Dig up that IT, but check it out.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, well, you look that up as well. So is that the consensus now of the planning commission to continue?
Yeah, so I just want to read, reread and make sure I have also have. Staff is going to look into the main and Terrell bowls and just the overall design of that intersection with the public works and the, and the city's engineer, make sure that that's all been designed to standard and that the access depths and everything are, are true standard. The applicant's going to consider a potential secondary or an alternative access point. They're also going to look at that eastbound traffic that you mentioned. And then staff is going to look into, staff is going to look into if any additional park spaces required by going above the forty-eight unit cap for this project. Is that all accurate?
Is that everything?
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm willing to meet at an alternative time and if, you know, it needs to be a different time than the next planning mission. I'll leave that up to you next week.
When is the next bank mission?
December eleventh.
December eleventh.
I missed something there.
Yeah, I'm just asking when the next.
December eleventh.
Meeting.
Commissioner Miller. In terms of our, our next available date. Got you, sorry.
Commissioner Miller is saying he'd be willing to meet earlier at a different time if that was.
Yeah, at a different time. If, if, if you did a special meeting.
Okay, well, just give me a second, okay. So the next meeting, the next meeting would be the eleventh of December.
We have time for the hundred and twenty day rule, so.
Right now, if you continue to December, I'm going to make a decision on that day. Right now, if you continue to December, I've got to make a decision on that day. We would have enough time to hold a hearing with the city council if it were appealed in January. But they would definitely have to make a decision at that meeting. Because we, we have February twentieth as our drop dead date.
On December eleventh.
Going back to this traffic study question, and I know this is more for the applicant to have, but perhaps because the initial study was done six years ago and then the update during COVID. COVID numbers are not realistic numbers. We all know everybody was homebound. Traffic just wasn't what it normally is. So I'm wondering if it could be reviewed again, maybe more.
It was, it was reviewed in, it was updated in last year. We, we submitted a new traffic.
I think that we are having entertain additional delay for this affordable housing project to try to answer the questions. I believe that part of all the information we provided, we meet the standards for approval. And so we're happy to do this. We want this to be a situation where we're responsive to community concerns. But things like doing a traffic study that isn't required, I, I just don't think that's going to be something that we would be willing to agree to here. We're again, meeting clear and objective standards in the code based on the number requires you calculate them. We don't trigger the requirement for that. So I, I feel that maybe that's where we'll, we'll leave that. But we appreciate the, the concerns and the discussion with that.
So it's consensus then to continue to date third, right? Okay, so the file number DR twenty-four dash zero best zero three zero green light design three, design review will continue to a date certain, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the record remains open.
One question of council, since the record is being left open and information is being brought in, should we do the twenty-one day seven, seven, seven scenario for this?
I would say no, because I didn't agree with this last time. Last time it was so confusing because stuff was coming there.
It's just something that we have to address.
It, it will have to address at the next meeting. You only have to hold the record open on request, so.
Okay, that's why, that's why I trouble. Okay.
That will move on to item number seven.
Thanks, everyone, too. Just for everybody in the audience. You just received right now that the hearing is continued to December eleventh at six PM. That is the notice. There's no additional notice that would be mailed. Your notice is being here at the meeting and that's why we continue to a date certain with the time. So you can get that right now. That's the notice. Yes, and, and I apologize if this did not get to you in a timely way, but the things that we canceled was a joint work session with you all with the city council to go over the FEMA rules that are being contemplated right now. And we would like to pick that up on Monday, the eighteenth with you and city council to provide you with the latest information that we have. Do right now by December first. There'll be some additional stuff that comes up down the road that will probably also have some additional work sessions. The city attorney will be there at that work session to help provide any classifications on questions you have on FEMA. This is the date that we have available right now for dirt work session to share with you the information on the new FEMA rules and what we need to do. And so again, I apologize as I think I shared with Chair King, it's been a little hectic the last two weeks. Some unfortunate things occurred. But we, we are trying to do this on the.
At what time?
At six PM.
I can do that until Sunday.
Everything's in dislocation until you're here otherwise. Which I don't think you ever will anytime soon.
All right, any other unfinished business?
No, sir.
I'd made in new business?
Right now, being the time of year that it is, I really don't have any new business for you. One of the things I did share tonight there with folks is we are working on trying to get a grant from the state to update the development code. I don't have anything more to show with you than that, but that is new business that we're working on for twenty twenty-five.
All right, thank you. Item number nine is land use applications and city project monthly report. Any questions, concerns, comments on those?
Yeah, I'll just let you know that now that phase five has recorded in Brinhale, we are starting to get building permits coming back in for that phase. So there's about a hundred and one. One hundred even, there's a hundred units in that phase. And so those are the last building permits for the project that are starting to come in right now.
So that moves on to item number ten. It's planning commission comments. Is there, do you know when the next meeting is? Well, there's a community meeting on.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, the first community meeting is tomorrow. I believe the.
Second rack is next Wednesday.
Yeah, it was the following week, yes.
Second meeting for the rack, next Wednesday, six PM.
So tomorrow, the fourteenth is the first community meeting. We're expecting a pretty large turnout for that.
Is that at six o'clock?
That's at six to eight here in this building. And then a week from today, on the twentieth, is the next, is the second rack meeting.
And that's at six o'clock?
That is also at six. So Commissioner House, if, if you are unavailable that night, please let Chair King or Vice Chair Levante know. So they can attend in your absence if you're unavailable.
On the twentieth?
On the twentieth, yes.
And so tomorrow, the community, I don't have to be available?
That's correct.
I don't know, we might, we might need to make sure.
Yes, and Chief Jones will be there as well.
So, all right, any other planning commission comments? Hey, the council. Do you have anything?
Kind of one, one way to have to finish my term as this long meeting tonight. I want to, I want to commend all you guys for what you do, what you did tonight. I want to commend you. This is what, this is what I like, the interaction and you kind of come to a conclusion. One thing I wanted to say to him when he left, but he made a comment about it's let's see, what did he say? Our decision or you said our town or our development? Well, it's not his, it's not their developments, our city. I wanted to say that you guys take care of that. You need to look out for the citizens and those that can't get out. I think it's, you guys need to hold them to it, in my opinion. You know, they gotta live with that. They're gonna have to live with that for the next thirty years.
Fortunately, our hands are tied.
I don't, I don't like. Affordable housing has a lot more different rules than, than what it had if they were coming from here.
This is challenging for staff as it is for you. I mean, there's a lot of criteria I wish we could have reviewed against and it just simply is unavailable. I mean, for example, when you get into the access and some of those things that you guys were talking about, you know, that is a criteria that we have. It is you know, and ninety percent of that criteria is clear and adapted. The last caveat says it must be harmonious and that is the disqualifier.
Let's change that.
I mean, at some point, somebody's got to start challenging these and going back. You know, we can't implement like this. You need to make some revisions.
You wouldn't be the first person, I'll tell you. There's at least one other mayor I worked with who was like seriously considering shutting down a planning department, telling developers to go to LCDC and submit their applications. So there's a lot of frustration around.
I understand their goal, but their goal doesn't, implementing it doesn't necessarily work.
Doesn't have to come at the cost of local discretion.
It would have been helpful if they did some thresholds then based on city sizes. But for example, if you were a small town, you would address that lack of public transportation, right? And give somebody to address that. Maybe you get a higher parking threshold or something like that, you know. It would be great for some.
More traffic count.
If we had a, if we had something in our code that had a lower threshold for what required a trip study, you know, pretty standard across a lot of your sources. Doesn't mean we have to adapt one, just like you, that's probably why I said.
Right, so anything else? Short term, I want to thank you for all your service.
I'll see Chris at most of my things.
Don't be a stranger.
Yeah, okay, I will.
Come around.
Okay, so then we'll move on to item twelve and staff comments. Do you have anything else?
I think I've exhausted them all at this point.
Okay, if there's no other commission business, our next regular meeting will be December the eleventh. It will be the continuation of the public hearing. And I don't know if you have anything else on the agenda?
I, I don't have anything else for you at this time. That'll continue to be the primary topic.
Okay, and then of course we'll first of the year jump on new codes.
Yes, yes. And, you know, I, I just want to commend Rowan. You know, Rowan's done a lot of hard work in the year that they've been here and this was something I asked Rowan to look into because I know that the code is important to you folks and you would like to get something a little bit more modern. And it looks like it's going to be something we can do. And so I think we're both pretty excited about this and I look forward to working with you on it.
Want to thank everyone for being here. Appreciate it. And with that.